This public charge, the chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until each until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. So are there citizens signed up? I don't have any, any, anyone signed up to speak.
Good morning, Chair Howerton and Commissioners. We do not have any citizens signed up to speak, nor do we have anyone online signed up to speak.
Thank you. So we will move on down to our announcements. Before I go to Ms. Wallace for the announcements, I do want to acknowledge that, given that we will not be here on the first of a month after today, we won't be here for our next meeting, and we will be able to do some more of the last of the month, just to acknowledge that this is Black History Month. And there are a lot of things that Black and Brown people that have contributed to this country, and just wanted to acknowledge that before we get started, and I'm sure we'll do some other things a little bit later. And also, the young man that was killed recently, just acknowledging his death, and the heart and soul of parents and people all across this country that's in pain because of what happens to a young man that is on his way home. That touches all of us, and I just, I just have to lift that up. All right, I'm going to move on to Ms. Wallace if she will do announcements for us.
Good morning. Because we do not have a meeting on February 13th, there is one urgent announcement that I was asked to read aloud. It is the 2023 Deco Cares Recipient Organization Applications. They are open. The 2023 Deco Cares Recipient Organization Applications are now open to all nonprofits serving the Triangle community. Durham County Cares is the annual Durham County government employee giving campaign in which our employees donate funds to those nonprofit agencies chosen as our annual recipients. Applications will be open through February 10th. For more information or to apply to be a recipient organization, please visit decocares.org. That concludes the announcement.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. And our next item is a ceremonial item, which I'm very privileged to get to announce, 230059, to recognize David Harris with the Soil and Water Conservation District for receiving this Supervisor of the Year Award for North Carolina Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts on January 19th, 2023. So the board has requested, we recognize an award recently received by David Harris at this time, and Eddie, I see Eddie is already at the podium, Soil and Water District, to share the details of this award. Welcome, Eddie.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. We all could use some good, happy news, and today we come before you to, to present you some accomplishments of one of our supervisor. I first met David back in 2014. Those of you who've been around a while know Brother Ray, who was on our board, he actually introduced me to David. He said he's got a gentleman that he thinks would be an asset, and that was an understatement. But David has really showed up to our events, and he's participated, and he's not only a leader here in the county, he's a leader in the state. And who knows, he'll probably be a leader in the nation one day in our organizations. But today, to give this award a little bit more prestige, we've asked Brian Evans, who is the Executive Director for the North Carolina Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts, to come and present the award to David. Brian?
Thank you, Eddie. Commissioners, good morning, and thank you so very much for taking this time during your meeting to recognize Mr. David, as we did at our recent annual meeting held in Cherokee in early January. There are 492 Soil and Water Conservation Supervisors across the state of North Carolina, and each year our association works to recognize one for that particular year who's made outstanding contributions to not only our association, but to the state of North Carolina, the citizens of their local soil and water districts, and to the protection of our, of our natural resources. And Mr. David Harris is an exemplary fact of that award that we give. Mr. David has served our association well. He has recently served as our Education Committee Chair, and was really committed to educating the youth and adults on the needs to protect our natural resources. And at our annual meeting, was also just recently elected to serve on our Technical Review Committee, which looks at the science and the engineering of best management practices that we have to address soil erosion, soil health, and water quality. Mr. David has done an outstanding job for our association. He's done an outstanding job for the citizens of North Carolina, and I'm sure for the citizens of Durham as well. And we were very proud and very honored to present this award to him this year. So thank you, Mr. David. Thank you Durham County for what you do, and thank you for Commissioners for recognizing him this morning.
Thank you. David?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm deeply honored to receive this award on behalf of Durham, the citizens of Durham for electing me to serve you, the BOCC, for providing the funds and support so we can do what we need to do to preserve our natural resources. And I stand on some broad shoulders. Taffet Lightner, who's in the audience, have received this award. Ray Earhart has received this award, and Danielle Adams have received this award. And again, it's 492 supervisors, and for four of the last 10 years, two have received this award, and there's one common thread, and that's the Soil and Water Staff. And I want to thank them for the encouragement and support that they have given us so we can go and work on your behalf. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David.
Don't go away, don't go away. Don't go, don't go, don't go away. Hang on. Now, we have to acknowledge, his, his other half is in the audience. Gail Harris, and those of you who don't know Gail, she has worked with the Durham, with the Durham County for 40 years? Was it 40 years or? Forty-seven years? Forty-eight years? I'll get it straight in a minute. Yeah, that's his other half. We just want to acknowledge that you're here, and we appreciate you. And any, are there any other Soil and Water Staff in the audience? Please stand, raise your hand. And David, you can't go away. The Commissioners may have something that they want to say.
David, I just want to say congratulations, very well deserved. You have given to our community in so many ways. You know, we first met when we were on the Planning Commission together, and you have been often the backbone of our local Democratic Party. I mean, just you, your, your whole, when I think of you, I just think about service. You are a true public servant to our community, so congratulations. Thank you for all that you're doing. Our environment is so important, and I just want to also acknowledge we have Townland Layton and Mark Waller here also from the Soil and Water Board. Thank you for your contributions as well. Am I missing anyone else from the board? Anyway, thank you all as well, but congratulations.
And I also want to offer up my congratulations to you, David, and to our whole team. It's clear that in Durham, we really know how important soil health is and the purity of our water, and I am lucky to get to see some of the work that you all do by virtue of sitting on the Farmland Board, Farmland Preservation Board. But David, thank you for your leadership as a supervisor and for just everything that you all do for Durham. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and, and I too. David and I go back, my first elected position was on Soil and Water, and I got to work with David, and I got to work with Ray, and that was a very special time for me I'll never forget. So thank you for being my partner, me being your partner while I was there, and all the work that you continue to do. Thank you. And we have this little. For you. All right. So Commissioners, we are down to our consent agenda, and we have 19 items on our consent, and I'll ask the manager if she'll go through these with us and see if there are any questions for the Commissioners.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with 230001, Capital Project Amendment Number 23PA00012, moving existing public school building capital fund lottery funding between Durham Public School Project and appropriating new lottery fund funding to various existing and new Durham Public School Projects. 230029, Resolution Delegating Authority to Approve Refunds of Overpaid Excise Taxes. 230041, Durham County Sheriff's Office Contract Amendment with Cornerstone Detention Products Incorporated in the Amount of $160,077, and to authorize the county manager to execute any other amendments not to exceed a project cost of $168,080.
Commissioner Jacobs?
I, I know this is an important need for us to have, but I don't know if anyone from the Office of the Sheriff could talk to us a little bit about how is, you know, what are the protocols related to people when they are undergoing withdrawal, they're having a mental health crisis, whether they would be in the facility, for instance, in one of these padded cells versus somewhere else? So I just, if there's, could explain a little bit about what the process is for determining where is the best place for people to be? And I guess also how, how this would be monitored if somebody was, was in a padded cell? What is the protocol related to that?
Good morning, Commissioners. Major Barnes with the Sheriff's Office. We are in the process of actually creating policies and procedures for that, but we will be working closely with our mental health team, Ms. Kelly. They will have a big part in determining whether someone should be in the padded cells or whether they need to go to another facility or not.
Thank you. Well, if you could share that with us when you, after you established that, just share with us, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay. 230047, Stormwater Operations Specialist LLC Contract Amendment in the Amount of $13,050, increasing the total contract amount to $112,150 for sewer easement maintenance services. 230050, Vision NC LLC Contract Amendment, increasing the contract by $25,000 to a total current contract amount of $141,600 for sewer line cleaning, video, and pump and hall services for the Durham, Durham County Utilities Division. 230055, Request for Consent of Access to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to Allow Its Division of Waste Management and Contractors' Access to the 721 Foster Street Site. 230056, Approval to Renew the County's Annual Contract with NWN to Continue the Usage of Veronis Cloud and Security Analytics Licenses in the Amount of $174,222.36. 230057, Approval to Renew the County's Annual Enterprise Maintenance Contract with SAP in the Amount of $147,815.88 for the Continuation of SAP On Premises, Licenses, and Support Services. 230058, Interlocal Agreement with the City of Durham for the Administration and Enforcement of Sediment and Erosion Control Requirements by Durham County within the City of Durham. Commissioner Carter?
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to take this opportunity, since we're talking about, you know, enforcement of sediment erosion control requirements, to ask if we feel like we have a sufficient number of inspectors to fulfill the obligations of the contract, and also, sort of along the same lines, what, what happens when some, when a developer's out of compliance? You know, what are the consequences for that? This has been an issue of late in Southeast Durham in particular, and I actually have had some people contact me about a development that's going in somewhere in the vicinity of Scott King Road and the American Tobacco Trail, and there's been a lot of clearing done there, and clearly a lot of retention ponds and attempts at best management practices. So just, just wondering about that.
I don't know if Jay is on the line. If he's not, I'll ask Perry if he can address it.
And if not, I'm happy to go ahead and approve this and just get the information.
We can get it back to you, yeah. But I do know that Ryan Eaves and his team have been working to address some of the concerns that have been lifted from the community, and so it is definitely an ongoing project and something that we're looking. Yeah. All right. We can't hear you. If we're having issues, we can certainly get that, answers to that question back to you, but please know that they are working to resolve it. Would you say that again? My manager, we can't hear you. Are you waiting on him? So I just said, if, since we can't, it seems like we can't get Jay connected, we'll certainly circle back around to Commissioners in response to the question. And it looks like Vice Chair Jacobs.
Yeah, I, I wanted to add to Commissioner Carter's questions because, you know, since we are enforcing, we are providing the soil and erosion control enforcement for the entire county, including the city, I think it, it's interesting because the additional development activity that we're experiencing in the county means that our staff is working even harder, and it doesn't seem like the city actually, according to the interlocal agreement, they don't provide us any funding for this service. So I'm wondering, is the cost of doing the inspections covered by the development fees? I'm just wondering, how, how is the cost for the, the work that has to happen associated with development? Is it kind of like an enterprise fund? Is it, is it covered? So that, that was one of my questions, and similar to Commissioner Carter, I know in last year's budget, we did add another inspector, and just wondering if that, if we have been able to hire someone with the kind of challenges that we've had, and so I'm sure Jay could answer all these things if he was able to.
But I'll give a quick.
Must be very frustrated right now.
So yes to both, yes, the answer to both of you. Do I hear you, Jay?
He's shaking his head, yes, he's very frustrated. Oh, okay, there he is.
Can you hear me now, Commissioners?
Yep, we can.
Okay, very good. Is it appropriate for me to answer now, or would an email be preferred in lieu of time?
If you can answer now, that's fine.
We, we will strive to be, be brief and be seated. Very quickly, we have three inspectors and an inspector supervisor now, thanks to the board's support, which is four persons total plus additional folks. We will certainly, as part of our budget submission, be evaluating where we are because we are also at about 280 active sites now, which is double what we had just a few years ago at around 140 to 150. But we feel we are providing in general good coverage right now, but we are always evaluating that to that point. In terms of what happens, we believe first in trying to work with people. The goal is compliance, because compliance means the streams are protected best, and so we strive to get our, our partners to comply, and when they don't, we do proceed to issue notices of violations and things like that that can result in penalties and give them only a certain amount of time to comply. In the very rare instances where we've not seen that, that bring folks into compliance, I would tip my hat to Attorney Andrews and his staff, and most notably Ms. Larissa Williamson, who is, as y'all know, one of our, our senior attorneys and has been a stalwart in helping us with the recalcitrant type cases. And to Chair Jacobs' question, this is a more or less an enterprise funded program. The fees we collect, like building inspections, the fees they collect pay off for all the building inspectors, the same here, the fees we collect on the sediment erosion projects, whether inside or outside the city, defray in full the cost of this program.
And if I can add, a part of the budget process for this year, General Manager Gibson and his team are looking at those fees and, and looking to see how we compare with other jurisdictions to make sure that we are assessing fees in a comparable manner. Thank you so much, sir. Any other questions? Next, we'll move to 230065, Amendment of Two Chemical Purchase Contracts for the Triangle Waste Water Treatment Plant. 230066, Meritech Inc. Contract Amendment in the Amount of $7,600 to a Total Current Contract Amount of $109,500 for Laboratory Services for the Durham County Utilities Division. 230069, Additional Funding for Contract with Teague Campbell Dennis and Gorham LLP.
Madam Chair, may I address this item? So this is merely a formalization. There was an approval of funding for the Bumpus versus Burkhead case in closed session, which is appropriate for such a matter, and it was a low initial cap just to explore the assistance of outside counsel. This is the formal approval of what was done in closed session being brought forward, and so this amount merely is a formalization of something that was done last October. We're just sort of crossing Ts and dotting Is a little bit, and so that's merely, this is not additional funding. It's this funding that was already reviewed by the board and approved, and we're just making it formal. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Attorney Andrews. Next, 230071, Durham County Matching Grants Program, Approval of Fiscal Year 2223 Grant Cycle. Can we have someone talk about that a little bit so the public understand what, what that is?
Good morning, Commissioners. Could you, I didn't quite hear what you had asked. Did you want, just a background information?
Yeah, just give it an overview as to, we talk about matching grants program, just to share a little bit more to the, for the public to understand.
Sure, I'd be glad to. So this program is now in its 32nd year. It is a program which seeks to fund recreation and open space projects in Durham County. It is a 50% matching grant program, so organizations are reimbursed for their spending up to the 50% threshold. We have funded projects all over the county. At this point, we've over had over 125 projects throughout the county with a total value of over $6.2 million, using $2 million in county matching funds. And this year, we have had three applicants for a total of $100,000 in requested funding.
Could you name a couple of examples?
Well, this year, we have a project at Christus Victor Church in, in South Durham. We'll be putting in a new playground facility. We have Ellerby Creek Watershed Association, who will be doing some renovations and additional trails and trailheads at their Glen Nature Preserve, and we have the Urban Community Agronomics will be doing some renovations in their Learning Farm in North Durham to include a new welcome center and playground on their, their site.
Any other questions? Commissioner Jacobs?
Well, I'm really excited that we upped our amount last year, so we're at $100,000 for this grant, but I'm just, I just want to thank you for running this program, and it's been such a great success. Even just looking at this year, we don't have as many, but we're funding things at a deeper level, which is, is also great. And if you look at the match, it's actually a two-for-one match. It's not even a 50-50 match, because we're funding $100,000 and the, and we're getting more than a $200,000 investment from the applicant, so, and that's actually been our rate of return, right? We've invested about $2 million for $6 million worth of projects, so kudos to all of you, Jane and your team. This is just such a great program, and, and also just the diversity of locations. We're getting really three different parts of the county impacted, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, and I'll ask Perry Manns if he'll go ahead and come up to give us a little more information on this agenda item, the 230075, Capital Project Amendment Number 23CPA00016, Appropriating $3.5 Million of Pay-Go Funding to create, create both the Board of Elections' South Roxborough Renovation Project 47302645DC155, and the Shops of Hope Valley Roofing and HVAC Project 47302645DC156, as well as authorize the county manager to execute a contract for architectural design services with RND Architects for both projects.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Manager. Good morning, Attorney Andrews. So as stated in the title of the Agenda Action Form, this is a two-part AAF. It's a Capital Project Amendment appropriating $3.5 Million into two capital projects. Project Amendment appropriating $3.5 Million into two capital projects, as well as asking authorization for the execution of the design contract with RND. So regarding the two separate capital projects, as you may be aware, we purchased the shops at Hope Valley Shopping Center with the intent of upfitting the Kroger box for the Board of Elections Department. And so that funding has to be tracked separately. And then the second funding appropriation is for the balance of the shopping center. As you know, we're fast-tracking the project in terms of upfitting the Board of Elections Kroger box space. And so that's why we're requesting this funding. The total design contract is about $2.6 Million. The balance of the funding is for some preliminary activities that we need to do, some hazardous materials, testing, surveys, additional preliminary activities, as we call it. And then probably within the next three to four months, we'll be coming back to you with a contract to get a construction manager at risk onboard for the pre-construction services contract. You guys know that's the contract by which we contract with a construction manager to sort of help us value-engineer the project. They determine means and methods and how to sort of fast-track the construction in order to meet our timeline. And that's basically what we have. We've sort of broken the project up into multiple phases. The first phase, we're calling it Phase 1A. That's actually the outfit of the Kroger box itself. Phase 1B, that is the site work and exterior improvements associated with the Kroger box. And then the final phase is the actual roof replacement and rooftop unit replacement for the balance of the shopping center. So, any questions?
And if I can just add, we're also planning to have a more in-depth discussion about this specific project at our Board Retreat, Budget Board Retreat on March 1st. So you'll get more detailed information on it.
I just wanted to ask, thank you for that information, Perry. And I just also wanted to ask about any sort of plans for green building, or, you know, anything that aligns with our goals as a county to, you know, move towards more renewable energy and protect the environment and that sort of thing. I feel like I saw somewhere it talked about solar on rooftop landing for that.
Yes, ma'am. You did, Commissioner. We mentioned that in the Agenda Action Form, but yes, all of our projects moving forward would be targeting our renewable energy implementation. And this project specifically talked about a photovoltaic study, which we're going to do to determine how much and what, to what extent we can put photovoltaics on the roof. As you know, that's a significant amount of roof space there, and so that would be a great project to sort of check that box. But there are also other sustainable initiatives that we'll be pursuing as part of this project as well. But, yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Fantastic.
Perry, is, so is this just for, is it just for the Kroger buildings that you're working with right now, not the complete mall?
Yes, that's correct, Chair Howerton. In order, Board of Elections has some timelines, and as Manager mentioned, we'll talk about this more at our upcoming Budget Retreat. But we're trying to get them in the facility as soon as possible in order to meet these upcoming voting deadlines or upcoming election deadlines. And so that's why we're fast-tracking this project. So the Phase 1A that I talked about is solely focused on an interior outfit of the Kroger box for the use of Board, by Board of Elections.
The other question, and you may have addressed it someplace, a manager. Do we have a, have we hired a manager yet for, to manage that? That's, that's on this agenda. I saw it here. Yep, so we'll, we'll get to that item. All right, thank you. Commissioner Jacobs?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Madam Manager. I had sent an email about this, so thank you. I'm really glad to hear that we are going to have a deeper discussion at the Budget Retreat, because I do, I do have a lot of questions. This is, this is new territory for the county. And just understanding, I did see the projected cost that was in our, in the agenda materials, and just wanted to make sure, you know, that's for all the phases. Just understanding where we're going to get the money for that, and how that compares to what we started out with when we were deciding to retrofit the site, and looking at our CIP, and then just understanding, you know, how we're going to manage this property cost-effectively, you know, fill, fill the spots, and, you know, what the sources of revenue are, the ongoing maintenance, operations, all that. So I know this is, as I said, something new for us, and so I'm glad we're going to have, have more conversations about it. And also, if you could share the bid sheet with us for, I'm not sure if it was there for the selection of this contractor. I don't know if it was in, in the materials.
Sure. And so Brenda, do you recall, how many responses did we receive in response to the RFQ? Okay, we received three responses to the RFQ. And this, it wasn't necessarily a bid, it was the request for qualification.
Okay.
We'll see a bid when we do the-
Right.
-contract, the construction contract.
Right.
We received three responses to the RFQ, and we selected RND as the most qualified firm for the project.
Okay. And I was really excited to see that you did include exploring the photovoltaics, because this is, again, I feel like the county is modeling the way here, because this is part of, you know, smart growth practices to retrofit and reuse existing properties. And, you know, even to go as far as adding, making them, you know, LED, I mean, not LED, LEED certified, or, or being able to make them more sustainable too, is, you know, us modeling that is, I think, fantastic. And related to item 230092 about the property manager, I don't want to get into it now, but I didn't understand the whole commission world when I looked at that. But, you know, that's something at the retreat, if we could talk about that too, how that all works.
Certainly. We'll be prepared.
Yeah, thank you.
And if it's okay with the Chair and the Board, we can go ahead and speak to the 230092 item since it's here. It's something that we were going to address anyway. So Nancy, if you don't mind coming up?
Sure. Good morning. To respond to Chair Jacobs' question regarding the commission structure, whenever there's a property management services agreement, one of the services that the property manager provides is leasing services. They included that in the event that we ever want them to manage the leasing of any spaces within the shopping center. It's not, it's not necessarily something that they would do, but if we said, you know, we're not going to be using this section for a while, and we want you to go ahead and market it and lease it, they just wanted us to know what their rates were.
And one, one other thing, Nancy, if you can just allude to the fact that we are going with the property manager that is currently managing the property with the intent-
Yes. Yes. The property manager that currently manages the property works for the property owner, B.C. Wood. It is an investment firm, and they have a branch that manages the properties that they own. They don't typically manage for other owners, but I inquired, and they agreed to go ahead and stay on for a six-month period. So we would have time to go through a selection process and get a new property manager under contract with the county. So it's a, it's a temporary measure just to keep things flowing properly while we get a new manager onboard.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you all so much, Perry and Nancy. Okay, next, we'll move to 230080, Budget Amendment Number 23BCC0064, and Capital Project Amendment Number 23CPA00015, Appropriating $2,79,600 of Sewer Utility Fund Fund Balance to the New Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System SCADA Upgrade Capital Project SC061. Budget Amendment Number 23BCC000065, Appropriating $15,000 of General Fund Fund Balance to the Rougemont Fund Center to cover the cost of upgrading the Rougemont Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System SCADA, as well as authorize the County Manager to execute a contract with CITI Inc. for the installation of the SCADA Upgrade Project in the amount of $1,745,500, and execute any related contract amendments not to exceed a total project budget of $2,094,600.
This is another one of these, like, word puzzles that you have to untangle. I think this is supposed to be for the Rougemont Water System, but if somebody could explain kind of what this is about, it seems like funds are being moved around to meet a need, but I really wasn't clear on it.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is, I can talk to the financing piece. This is a majority enterprise fund project that is installing some systems for the whole enterprise fund. However, three or four, maybe a little more years ago, Rougemont was separated out from the enterprise fund. So due to that, this project also affects the Rougemont Fund. So a very small portion, I think it's 15,000 of this, will be for the Rougemont, and the general fund has to pay for that. So the majority of this $2,79,000 project is an enterprise fund project. Does that help?
And David, is something being done to the Rougemont system as well?
The Rougemont system is getting the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System installed on it, which, if I believe correctly, and I will be corrected by enterprise fund folks, it's a way to monitor our systems a little better remotely. And it, this is an example of enterprise fund is looking out for all the systems, and it just so happens Rougemont can partner with this. But we want to make sure the, the line of funding is very dedicated to Rougemont versus the enterprise fund.
And I'll just add, the SCADA system is a very critical piece of software that's needed, and so it's being upgraded to make sure we can monitor the system as needed. What kind of funds is in the enterprise funds? What's in the enterprise?
The primary funding for this, you know, as you know, they have a few different fees that are collected. I think we're using fund balance to offset this, which will also be offset by over-collection of system development fees and other user fees this year.
Thank you. All righty. Any other comments or questions? Jay, did you have something to add?
No, ma'am. I was just turning on in case the Commissioners had questions about the SDF or the more detail on the SCADA. Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move to 230081, Budget Amendment Number 23BCC000063, and Capital Project Amendment Number 23CPA00014, Appropriating $590,436 of Sewer Utility Enterprise Fund Fund Balance, and transferring those funds to the New Triangle Waste Water Treatment Plant Access Control and Video Management System Capital Project SC060, awarding the request for proposal RFP23006, contract to Brady Integrated Security, Inc., as well as authorizing the County Manager to execute the contract in the amount of $536,760, and execute any related contract amendments not to exceed a total project budget of $590,436. And I promise, we're not trying to confuse the Board with all of these words. No, it's a lot. Any questions or comments on that one?
It's complicated and expensive to run the Triangle Waste Water Treatment-
It is. It is.
Not a lot on our agenda about that today.
Okay. Next, 230083, Interlocal Cooperative Agreement for the Division of Sales Tax Between the County of Durham and the City of Durham, July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. 230091, Approval of Interlocal Agreement with the City of Durham to Support the Bull City United Program. 230092, and we've talked about this, but I'll just read it into the record, Short-Term Property Management Agreement with the Wood Group LLC for the Shops of Hope Valley located at 3825 Sox, South Roxborough Street, Durham NC 27707. Okay, so Madam Chair, that ends the consent agenda items. Thank you. And so now we are at, down to our discussion items. The first discussion item is 230079, and that's a presentation from Forward Cities on the E3 Durham Community Navigator Program. And the Board has requested to receive a presentation from Forward Cities on the equity for every entrepreneur Durham Community Navigator Program. And we have Andy Miracle with the Economic Development Director here to introduce this item.
Good morning, Commissioners and to the dais. You may recall, we had a brief conversation at the policy retreat where General Manager Hager retold that when the SBA Community Navigator Pilot Program was announced, we received some encouragement from Commissioner Burns to make sure we had an application. And this was a great opportunity, and we wanted to make sure that somebody on behalf of Durham was applying and that we had an opportunity to, to be a part of this program. And so we started having conversations with Durham Tech, the city, North Carolina Central, to determine who may be best suited to apply. A few weeks into having those conversations, we heard that Forward Cities was also considering an application as well. And so we had the opportunity to meet with Fay and to better get to know her and understand the work that they were doing in entrepreneurial ecosystem building. And once we had that conversation, we were all confident that Durham would be best served with Forward Cities applying on our behalf. And that decision was reinforced when, I believe it was about 700 applicants, applied for this program. Maybe roughly 50, 60 were selected. And this was the only one in the state of North Carolina that was awarded. And so we were, we were very excited about that opportunity. And so today, you're going to have the opportunity to hear from Fay and the work that has happened over the course of the last year, and where we may go from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. It's been, it's a pleasure to be here today. I want to thank the Commissioners for welcoming us to present. My name is Fay Horwood, and I'm the President and CEO of Forward Cities. And today, I'm honored to speak with you about the E3 Durham Program, which Andy just alluded to, which was launched in the fall of 2021. Forward Cities is a nonprofit organization headquartered right here in Durham, located in the Provident 1898 Co-Working Space in the Mutual Plaza Building. We're a national organization with a place-based approach and mission. And our vision is that every entrepreneur would have equitable opportunity to launch, grow, and scale a business that creates wealth for themselves, their families, and/or their communities. And since 2014, our organization is partnering with governments, foundations, and stakeholders to develop entrepreneurial programs in over 40 communities across the country. I personally joined the organization in 2000, four years ago, and for the past few years has served as its President and CEO. Forward Cities is focused on building equitable entrepreneurial ecosystems. That's a lot of words. A lot of people often ask us what that means. And I tend to use an analogy that makes sense to a lot of people, and that is, an entrepreneurial ecosystem is like an airport. An airport, its sole purpose is to get people from where they want to go, from where they are to where they want to go. And airports are not designed haphazardly. They are designed by intention. Everything you see in an airport from when you start, first start to get close, the signs, the way they are laid out, everything in them is designed to, to lean into something that's called, that's called seamless flow. And that means to eliminate barriers, to eliminate bottlenecks, to be able to make- sure that you remove as many barriers as possible for people to get to their destination effectively and seamlessly. And why does that matter for an entrepreneurial ecosystem? Because everyone is, can't do everything all at once. A lot of times what you find in entrepreneurial ecosystems is that you've got some organizations duplicating services, you've got gaps in services, so that entrepreneurs aren't really getting the full set of what they need to thrive and survive. And so intentional design of ecosystems makes sure that everyone gets what they need when they need it and most effectively. Equity is important because it's been found that ecosystems and entrepreneurs are most successful when there's a density of connectivity and services aligned together and all working together towards the same goal. And that is the work that we do. We work with communities to figure out where their barriers to entrepreneurial success and help them remove them. And so the question is, why was it the right time to do this in Durham at the time we started it? And as you, as you'll see, I love this stat, Durham was voted in two thousand twenty-two as the second best place in America to start a business. Notice it's above Charlotte and Raleigh. And that is because there's a lot of great resources here. There's a lot of great organizations doing work to serve entrepreneurs. The challenge often is, though, that that, the growth of that opportunity is stifled because a lot of these organizations are working in silos. And Forward Cities, as a, as an ecosystem building expert around the country, what we have done here is we've sort of emerged this as a place around the country where organizations and entities are coming to learn how to do this work. Over the course of the past two years, we have had over two hundred-plus entrepreneurial ecosystem builders from around the country come here to learn from Forward Cities and other organizations in the region on how to do this. So something is working. And that, the core of what's working is the E3 Durham, Durham Program. So we received the SBA grant in two thousand twenty-one. We have been working with, with six organizations, hub organizations, as Andy mentioned, to do this work. We've been targeting outreach to under-resourced demographics. The, the whole goal of this program is to reach entrepreneurs that wouldn't normally find their way to entrepreneurial supports. So who are they? How do we get to them? We've been testing unique approaches for doing that in this hub-and-spoke model where we're providing the administration, the supports, the infrastructure, the marketing, the outreach, the research, the evaluation, the tracking, all of that, taking that set of work so that the organizations that serve entrepreneurs can focus on what they do best, and that is to serve entrepreneurs. And thankfully, we've been grateful to have the support of the city and the county in this work. So what does it do, this program? This is the entrepreneur's experience. First, they have to have a dream. They have to have something that they want to accomplish, a business, an idea, or a business they've been attempting to sort of run and having challenges with. They come and get connected to what we call a community navigator, and that's a person that's able to sort of, that understands the whole landscape of the entrepreneurial ecosystem, what services exist, what might be best to serve that entrepreneur. They go through an intake process and talk one-on-one with that person so that they can determine what's the best pathway for them. They then connect, the navigator then connects them to organizations, one of our spoke organizations that is best suited for their needs at the current time. And then they don't take their hands off. That navigator speaks with that entrepreneur every two weeks, check in and see, how's it going? What barrier might you have hit? How can we help? What else do you need? And then, once the entrepreneur is ready and they sort of work through with their, with their coach or their business, business service provider, they get to a point where they are ready to seek financing or funding and/or to increase their funding and financing. And then the navigator and their, their spoke organization will help them connect, get connected to that funding. Most importantly throughout all of this, we create, Forward Cities creates an opportunity and a culture of networking. So we hold monthly events where there's workshops, there is networking, there's food and drinks where people can gather and create that density that we know that entrepreneurs need to, to survive and thrive. So this is sort of a very simple way of describing the program, but there is a lot of layers of this that are, that have been taking place over the past year or so since we've been running the program. Here's a look at some of the fantastic things that have been going on. You'll see some of our spoke organizations have been hosting an average of three or four workshops every month. We've done this in-person and virtually. You'll see the networking event that's hosted there at Provident where folks come every month to sort of share and learn from one another and to learn from the spoke organizations. So we're very grateful to have these amazing spoke partners. They do what they do well, and we're there to support them in delivering service to entrepreneurs. We hold bi-weekly meetings with all of these organizations so we can help them align better with their services, so they can help one another in best, learning best practices and to share what's working for them so that they're not reinventing the wheel for every entrepreneur. And then we also have bi-weekly partner calls with the city and county to align with their strategic priorities, to make sure our entrepreneurs are best sort of aligned to take, take advantage of any opportunities that come from the government. And then all along the way, we are telling the stories of the entrepreneurs and the connections between the organizations, and we are sort of telling the story of what's, what works to get more entrepreneurs excited about stepping up and taking that chance. So it's working. I mean, we have had some tremendous impacts since we launched in the November of, since the program launched in November two thousand twenty-one. We have, we're nearing two hundred clients enrolled as of this month, with an average of twenty new clients a month. There have been over one hundred workshop hours delivered, over five hundred hours of navigation and counseling, and that means a hundred and seventy-five hours of, of that navigation support with those bi-weekly calls, and then three hundred hours of direct counseling with one of our spoke organizations. You'll see that there's a variety of topics of, of entrepreneurial activity and support that have been covered, from marketing and sales to business planning, to access to capital and accounting. Whatever the entrepreneurs need, that's where our spokes are leaning in. So it's working. This is a story, this is Monica Evans. She is the owner of an company called Peace for Nine. Prior to the pandemic, she launched a business doing branded t-shirt designs. In the fall of two thousand twenty, unfortunately, her business was on the, on the road to closure, as were many businesses at that time. She heard about and joined the program, and this is a picture of her in December at the Pull-up at Provident event where she shared that since joining the program, not only was her, was she able to save her business, but her sales have, have gone to two thousand percent over where she started, when she started the program. And this is just one of the stories of what this looks like, when people can get directly connected to what they need and to have that person, that person there to support them along their journey, particularly if they hit obstacles. So what have we learned along the way? In serving these two hundred entrepreneurs, what we've discovered is that most of them are primarily early-stage and idea-stage entrepreneurs. The SBA really wants to figure out how to get capital into the hands of entrepreneurs, but the entrepreneurs that have, are making their way to the program are not quite there yet. So most of them are pre-revenue. A few of them, very few of them are capital-ready. And what we're seeing is that the, the organization or the companies that are further along in their process that still need support, this is not necessarily the environment that, that sort of they're drawn to. And so we've got to figure out a way to reach them. We've also figured out that although it's a fantastic program, what we're doing, you know, when you have a federal, federal grant, it's very specific on what you can and cannot do, and so it's somewhat siloed from the rest of the activity in the ecosystem and the rest of the, the spoke organizations and other organizations' activities, which would, which would really want in a healthy ecosystem. And then we're also, Forward Cities is somewhat limited in our capacity to do what we do best, which is to, to be very intentional about that ecosystem development. And in this grant, we are very much playing an equiper, an administrative role in doing quite a bit of, of grant tracking, and we see that there's a lot of opportunity for us to lean in more to ensure more cohesive and connected entrepreneurial ecosystem. So what is the opportunity that lies ahead for this, in this program? There's, there's much that can be done that we see would be of value to the city and the county of Durham. We'd love to be able to gain deeper, gain a deeper understanding of entrepreneur, entrepreneur needs. We'd love to be able to increase navigation support. We are quickly running out of navigator hours. You saw there, there's like, we're approaching two hundred hours to this, to this point, and that's with one person, one navigator. We see there's an opportunity for greater targeting of needs, like we said, by stage, size, sector, and demographics, and the aligned outreach efforts that will be needed to reach those businesses. We see opportunity to grow capital readiness and connections. Like we said, a lot of these people are pre-revenue and need some, some dedicated focus to help them get to that point where they're ready for capital. We'd like to engage a broader set of organizations and service providers. Right now, we're only working with six spoke organizations. There are dozens of organizations across the city and county that serve entrepreneurs that we'd love to be able to integrate into this effort. We'd like to adapt our structure to more effectively equip and support spokes in our, in an ecosystem development capacity, and through that, grow a more densely connected ecosystem. And ultimately, all of this leads to being able to grow the Durham and Triangle economy over the coming decade. So what would this look like to expand the program? We'd be leveraging on our foundation that we've built over the past year to build a broader ecosystem infrastructure so that what we've built can continue to serve Durham and Durham entrepreneurs and, and exponentially more entrepreneurs. We'd like to focus on a more holistic and forward-looking strategy by building in some research to understand a little bit better where, where the needs are, more specifically across the entire ecosystem. Currently, all of our surveys are focused on only the entrepreneurs in the program. So we'd like to see what that would look like to expand. And then, you know, there is opportunity to, to lean into this idea of what are the short, medium, and long-term strategies that we can sort of develop and deploy to grow success for the program long-term. And Forward Cities, in all our work, we take a human-centered approach. That means we are not top-down. We don't come into a community, just like Durham, we don't come in and say, this is what we're going to do. We work with the community to understand what the needs are. So we do surveys, we do town halls, we do an ecosystem-wide assessment, and this idea is, in order to do this, we're going to need to build internal capacity as an organization to lean into this work, but that discover work is crucial to come first. And then we use that information that we gather to design. So we analyze what we, what, what's coming in, we plan in conjunction with community, and the idea would be at this, at this stage, we'd figure out how to build the SBA program in as sort of a core foundation of a larger program and how do we integrate it? And then from there, we'll work with community partners to, to design what they want their ecosystem to look like. And lastly, we get to a deliver stage where we're able to integrate all of this together and implement it long-term across the city of Durham and Durham County. And what you'll see here is what we anticipate would be a timeline for that work. Two thousand twenty-three to lean into that discovery phase of work for the rest of this year, and then go into two thousand twenty-four for planning, analysis, and planning phase along with our partners and to integrate with the current SBA program. And then you'll see in two thousand twenty-five, move into strong implementation and delivery, a programming that would allow us to build new programs with our partners that are based, that's based on the research that we did to determine what are the opportunities and the gaps, and then beyond that, to continue to figure out how can we sustain this work going forward with a variety of implementation and funding partners. So this is where we sit. We've had an exciting little over a year. We celebrated a year in December with all the sort of entrepreneurs and organizations present at Provident eighteen ninety-eight that have been a part of this work. This is a timely strategy, and we're looking at how do we continue the service beyond the SBA funding, which is slated to end this November. And so we're, we're working with the county to develop a proposal to leverage, you know, these opportunities and the foundation we've built on and to include more community partners. The proposal we're, we're sort of wanting to put forward would contain pass-through awards for local technical service providers, including some of our existing spokes and potentially others. And ultimately, we want to be able to use our expertise as an organization and the relationships and partnerships we've grown to seed the ecosystem and its infrastructure for future growth. Thank you.
Thank you for this great presentation. I do have a couple of questions, Fay. What is the difference between what you do and the Black Chamber?
Sure, most definitely.
Can you share? Can you?
Yes, most definitely. So the Black Chamber of Commerce would be considered what we call an entrepreneurial support organization. Their work is designed to deliver direct services to entrepreneurial organizations and to sort of convene black-serving business, black businesses and organizations that primarily serve black entrepreneurs together to better further their success. And we work with Black Chambers around the community or around the country as a part of our ecosystem work. What we like to sort of share is that our work is not involved in direct delivery of service to entrepreneurs. In this particular case for the SBA, they wanted us to serve the role of the hub organization. And that is typically sort of the, the role that we play, that is to align all the partners in an ecosystem. So we would see the Durham Black Chamber as an active part of Durham's entrepreneurial ecosystem, but so is the SBA, so is the SBTDC, so is a variety of Provident eighteen ninety-eight, Knox Street. And our work as ecosystem developers is to make sure all of these organizations are actually working together more effectively so that they can maximize their, their resources, and also to maximize the investment of a city and county partner or foundations so that we understand how to holistically serve the ecosystem more effectively.
So the, the hub, MWBE, now you work closely with that, that group, or you have a separate entity? I'm just trying to define the, because it sounds like a, a lot of overlap, and I'm just trying to define where is the connection?
So I guess that would, that would be the word, and that, that is connection. It is that we are not a direct-serving agency or direct-serving organization. Our role is to actually serve all of those organizations that serve entrepreneurs and to make sure that entrepreneurs are most effectively served by the interconnection of those, those partners.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioners Jacobs?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I, this is one situation where I really, we get a lot of PowerPoints. Sometimes I feel it's like, you know, death by PowerPoint or decision-making by PowerPoint. But I feel like you're, you really, I, I mean, listening to your presentation, I really learned a lot from the way that you presented everything, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you are putting into this because, and even things like looking at human-centered design, because, you know, we, we, we're good at creating things that don't necessarily work. And, and I think the, you know, the navigator model, it's, you know, kind of the same case management. I mean, it, it's what we're looking at across systems everywhere is that, you know, it gets down to the human element and that we really need somebody there that is guiding people and, and supporting people and connecting them to resources no matter what, what the issue is. So I, I really like, and I know this is coming out of the SBA, right? So you only have one navigator right now? That's it?
Yes, one navigator has, at this point, served over two hundred clients.
Okay, wow. Yeah, we, we heard a great conversation about, about this, about the SBA on Monday with Vice President Harris a week ago, and the head of the SBA was there, and she did talk about these, you know, these navigator grants. And so I guess, you know, you did allude to kind of what are the next steps in sustainability. I'm wondering how, you know, you can plug into the city because frankly, we give all of our federal money for workforce development flows directly to the city. You know, so they, they tend You know, so they tend to be the ones who, you know, the Office of Economic and Workforce Development, they're basically using the county's funds. So I think that is definitely, you know, their kind of wheelhouse is the small business support. I mean, we tend to focus more on the bigger kind of, you know, the bigger companies with our incentives policies and, you know, Trayburn, RTP. But certainly, you know, I'm very interested in, you know, Office of Economic and Workforce Development, looking at different ways to use the small, the way, the funds that come to them to support small businesses, for sure. You know, this really, I think this model completely makes sense, and it sounds like you are working hand-in-glove with the SBA on this, which is what they talked a lot about in the conversation with Vice President Harris. I was wondering about the capital piece. You kind of alluded to that a little bit. They, you know, they were focusing a lot on credit unions and community banks, and how is that part going?
So, you know, one of the things that's, I think, very important to think about from a perspective of small businesses versus large businesses is the idea that those large businesses started small. And so how do we, sort of, we bridge that gap? I think what we're finding is that often involves making sure that there's the capital ready to serve businesses that are ready to grow. And what we're seeing is that businesses are getting stuck. They're getting stuck at small because the resources don't necessarily exist to support them in that growth strategy. And so there's a gap. If you have certain funding that's designed to support small business development, and certain funding that's designed to support large-scale corporations and attracting companies, there's a gap in the middle of how do we, how do we scale and support companies in scaling from that small to medium-size, and then to large? What does that look like, and who leans into and supports that set of work? So the capital piece is crucial, and what we're attempting to do is figure out how we can better equip these businesses to be capital-ready, and to make sure that there's an equity in how that happens.
Are you, when you say making sure they're ready, are you also going through the, is the navigator going through the step of helping to connect them to our local funders, you know, bank, our local community banks and credit unions?
Yeah, so we've developed, you know, a capital access directory for entrepreneurs at different stages, and also for different sectors. This idea of, once that entrepreneur is ready for that, they are either referred by our navigator or referred by the spoke organization that they are working with, and that could be anything from loans to grants, also to credit opportunities as well.
Andy, it looks like you want to say something.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Just in terms of your question related to funding, as Fay mentioned earlier, we meet bi-weekly as strategic partners, both the county and the city are. We don't currently have funding, local funding, to support this program. It's only supported by SBA funding at this point. And so part of the conversations that we have are, one, just to make sure that we're all attuned of, you know, any funding opportunities at any level, federal, state, or local dollars that we may be able to use to help support this program. Because as Fay mentioned, the funding is currently set to expire at the end of November, and so we're trying to have some foresight here, and thinking about what can we do to maintain the continuity of the program with so much time and energy already invested. We certainly want to be able to maintain and grow this program that we have. And so the city is certainly aware of the funding scenarios and the opportunities to support as well.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
It's great to meet you, Ms. Hewitt. This was, as Commissioner Jacobs said, an outstanding presentation. You just nailed it, and I feel like I learned a lot also, and it was really interesting and exciting. And I do think that it aligns with, you know, one of the main challenges that the city and the county and the school district are all trying to attack, and that is, you know, shared prosperity. Durham has experienced a lot of economic growth and development, and we're trying to break the link, you know, between economic development and basically income inequality. And so thank you for doing that work, and it will be interesting to see how we can plug in and if we can provide support, and I hope we can. It seems like it makes a lot of sense. Just trying to figure out what's our role, what's the city's role, that sort of thing. Is there a technical definition between entrepreneur and a small business?
There is not a technical difference. However, if you were Googled, Google the word entrepreneur, you would primarily see white males sitting at a computer looking very serious. If you were to Google the word "small business owner," you would primarily see black women or black couples in a cafe with aprons, smiling. And that is sort of the paradigm that we sort of live with in this work, is the perception of who is an entrepreneur and who isn't an entrepreneur. An entrepreneur is anyone that creates a business opportunity at risk. And actually, people of color are more at risk when they start a business than anyone else.
Great answer. Boy, I'm really glad I asked. I feel like I had another question, sort of similar to that one. I don't know, I may have to get back with you offline. I can't think of what it is now, but sure, if I could remember, it would be brilliant.
Happy to have the conversation.
But, oh, I know, I was going to ask you, I feel like I read this, but I can't remember it either, the level of funding that you've been working from with your one navigator and have done this great work, what is that?
Well, the grant was $1 million for two years, which does not add up to a whole lot, because some of that is also, or at least half of that is a pass-throughs to other organizations. So that's $500,000 for Forward Cities over two years.
Okay. And it really seems like you have had great success even during COVID.
Yes, so I, the program was actually launched as the tail end, or I guess we're still, I don't know if we are still in it or not, but launched officially in January of 2021. I'm sorry, 2022, sorry. And, you know, a lot of folks were going back, back to business at that time. We were also dealing with the fact that during, for PPP and the first round of ARPA funding, very limited in terms of what money actually got into the hands of underrepresented entrepreneurs, so trying to deal with that deficit as well.
Excellent. And I'm sure you have metrics that are, long-term metrics, that are really looking at that link between income inequality and economic development, and race, and income maybe even too, social economics. Are you, do you have, are you tracking a specific, is there something specific you're looking at?
So for Forward Cities work, you know, in general as an organization, we are looking at wealth creation for black and brown entrepreneurs in general. That is sort of our overall goal. This work that we do for Durham, we're able to, in this particular instance, we're only able to track it as long as this particular grant will allow. But for the purpose of Forward Cities, what we're trying to do is link this idea of more dense and connected entrepreneurial ecosystem and the removal of barriers to business starts, and also to revenue growth and job creation.
Really good sense, and I thought your analogy with the airport was great for ecosystem. Anyway, thank you very much for your work, and I hope to have a greater, stronger connection with what you're doing in the future.
Thank you very much.
Well, I can tell you from experience, being an entrepreneur is not easy work. You are, and the hardest part is being able to get out and meet and go to these organizations and do the connection that you need to do, because you are, you are the, what is it? You do everything. And not easy. Before I became commissioner, I did that constantly, and you got to deliver the service, you got to go out and get it, you got to figure out how, everything. So being an entrepreneur is not easy work, and so thank you for helping people to make, to be successful in that arena.
Thank you very much. We are hoping that our work will de-risk, you know, the investment that funders, that the government, that other entities put into business owners in community. And it's beautiful work, and we love it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I just have one quick follow-up. Andy, can we find out exactly what type of funds are going into the city through, via the Office of Economic and Workforce Development, that are related to small business entrepreneurial support? What is that level of funding, and how is it currently being used? And what opportunity there would be to redirect the use of some of those funds?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I did want to just say that I, you know, have had an ongoing interest in how the county can use some of our economic development funds for other businesses besides large corporations, which are, you know, critically important, but I just think the small businesses are so pivotal, and we have an opportunity to reach more people of color perhaps, and at the small business level, like what you just described to us. And so even if in the past, we've had this division, I don't know, I personally just am interested in more small business support.
Thank you, and I want to make sure there's a clarification to make sure it's understood that the funds that currently go to entrepreneurial support organizations from both the city and the county, we are not recommended at all that those funds be redirected to Forward Cities. Those funds are important, and those organizations need those funds. What we are attempting to share with you all is that there is a different level of work around this, which is this ecosystem development scope of work, that allows those organizations to more effectively utilize your funding and your support, because we are, we're making sure that they are meeting the right needs of entrepreneurs.
Commissioner Carter, to your question, I anticipate in the coming months that we will be coming forward with some proposals for consideration as well.
Thank you so much. Next item is 230089, Community Intervention and Support Services Department Presentation. The board has requested to receive an update from the Community Intervention and Support Services Department that includes an overview of the department's staffing levels, website development, and highlight key community partners. And we have Crystal Harris, there you are, yeah.
Good morning.
Here to present this from the DSS department?
No, so I am now the Director of Community Intervention and Support Services.
Okay, you're going to need to speak into that.
Okay, can you hear me better now? Okay. So good morning, everyone. I am here to provide an update on the Community Intervention and Support Services Department. Just an overview, I will give kind of a where are we now? I believe the department is now about a year and a half old, almost. And so just want to kind of give everyone a brief status update on our vacancies, our staffing, and things that we're working on. Give some CISS program updates. We do have three programs within that department, so I will go over that. And then we will also have a partnership presentation with our Duke University Hospital Partnership for our hospital violence intervention program. So the first, I want to just go over our org chart. We currently have four vacancies within the department. I do have one correction for our project build manager. As of Friday, I have made an offer to Mr. Arkeem Brooks, who's actually here with us today. So Mr. Brooks will be promoted to our program manager from our supervisor. We also have, joining us, our administrative officer, who is Mashonda Jackson. She will be beginning with the department on February 20th. She's no, she's not new to Durham County, she's coming over from DSS. And so then we also have three vacancies within our Bull City United area that we will be recruiting for in the coming months. So as a total, we have 36 positions, and four of those are currently vacant. So for a while, we've been working on our website for the department. We are working with our Durham County ISNT on development of that website, as well as an external public-facing dashboard, to be able to share quarterly reports from our programs, as well as numbers for our programs around. With Bull City United, we have our information from Cure Violence, which is the model that we use. So we are currently in progress for both the website. The link will take you to what we have so far for our website. It is in development, but we're hoping to have it completed by the beginning of next month. And so that way, everyone, when they Google Bull City United, Project Builder, My Brothers' Keeper, they'll be able to come to information and learn more about what's going on within those three programs. So we'll start with Bull City United. Their logo is Peace is a Lifestyle. Just an overview, that Bull City United, the purpose of this program is for gun violence intervention. Our goal is to stop the number of shootings in Durham County. Our employees are here to detect and interrupt violent conflicts, and that does include prevention of retaliation should there be a shooting. Our staff do go out to kind of canvas the community to find out what's, what happened, what's going on, and what services can we provide, or resources we can provide, to ensure there's no retaliation, shootings as retaliation in the community. We identify and treat highest-risk, so our caseloads are some of the highest-risk individuals to either, to be a part of a shooting. Right now, we're, our goal is to have 15 participants on each caseload, so we're working towards having that. We do have two vacancies for our outreach workers. So once we have those outreach workers hired, that will be the number-one goal, is to get 15 individuals on those caseloads. And then we mobilize. We work to change the norms of the community, to kind of shift the paradigm within that community, and part of that is responding to every shooting that occurs. We do receive our data from Durham Police Department on a weekly basis, and it's broken down within our targeted areas. As I just stated, these are our census tracts that we have. This is just a map, just to show you the areas within Durham County. Last year, we added two additional tracts within Bull City United. So now there's a total of six areas that we service. Just some program highlights, we did hire a new program manager for Bull City United that started in, she started in December 2022. She's no stranger to the program. Her name is Keisha Gray. She's been with the program since its inception, so she is our new program manager. We actually had some training for, a booster training for our staff, as well as managerial training for the new managers, and myself as well, with Cure Violence Global. They were here for a total of 10 days with myself and the staff. We have acquired two new units from Durham Housing Authority that will be located in the Oxford Manor neighborhood, as well as Quorn Wallace Apartments. These two locations will be spaced for our team that actually works in those areas to have a home base. So we are working to get those upfitted, so that we could move in in the next month or so. We have received the $250,000 project funding that was requested last year, and that was a part of the Bull City United Violence Intervention Research Program, project. So General Manager Pierce and myself will be having a strategic planning day on Thursday to work through how we will be planning to utilize the $250 that was received from the David Price Grant. Finally, for the Bull City United program, they will be hosting their annual Week of Peace next month, next week, February 13th through the 18th. Each day, we go into the, each tract that we serve, and so we'll have activities beginning at 5:00, and more information will be forthcoming. But each day of that week, we will go into those communities and just have some talks about peace. We will recognize any community members that have lost their lives to gun violence within those community areas. Moving on to Project Build, this is our Durham County Gang Intervention Program, Building, Uplifting, and Impacting Lives Daily. This program works with youth and young adults between the ages of 14 and 21 who are at risk of gang involvement. Project Build has outreach workers as well, and they work one-on-one with their caseload, the youth within that, within- within the program. And we talk about different things that around social skill building, and that could be support in decision-making, helping them with employment. We connect with students and the school system to also just support any of their, if they're on, from juvenile justice, if they're on probation, helping them with supervision. A lot of our referrals come from the courts as well as DSS. So we work with them to be able to get through their supervision or their probation, as well as try to reduce their risk of gang involvement. So the intervention team, this team meets once a month, and it's a multidisciplinary group of professionals. We have everyone at the table that is involved with you. That's from Durham Public Schools to the court counselors. Of course, we have our team of Project Build. We also have some community members, those that have mentoring programs or provide other services that we believe would be essential to making sure that our youth meet their goals. And so the intervention team is a core part of the comprehensive gang model, which is what the Project Build follows. And again, as their role, we sit together, we talk about, kind of do case reviews on our participants, and we just look at what, where the gaps are in services. Is anything that we find that is not working well? What is working well? But we do try to identify areas that we can continue to provide services and support to not only the participant, but their family as well. Highlights for Project Build, our new manager will start on February 20th. Project Build is currently fully staffed, which is great. We brought on another outreach worker, the latter part of last year. We recently completed our JCPC monitoring, and that monitoring did not have any findings and was recommended there was no follow-up needed. So that was a really good monitoring for this year. Project Build also received some grant money that was reallocated from JCPC in the amount of $25,000, and we will use those funds to expand the skill-building opportunities for our youth. Project Build has also implemented a curriculum-based group session for the participants. We have a boys' group and a girls' group, and our, and our outreach workers facilitate these meetings, but we also have invited community stakeholders and other agencies to partner with us to also come in to speak with our youth about different items, from finance, which we have some people from Durham County Finance Department that's going to come in and speak with them, to anywhere around self-care and things of that nature. My Brothers Keeper, we, I'm happy to announce that we have a new My Brothers Keeper program manager, Corey Rollinson. He started, he's on week number three, I believe it is. Mr. Rollinson and I have been going through kind of some historical information about where My Brothers Keeper was prior to. I know it's been dormant for some time. So we actually have a meeting scheduled today with our regional liaison, just to kind of touch base and think about how we can get things started. A lot of things that happened prior to the shift in the initiative, but I feel like there's a lot of historical information that will still be helpful in us moving forward. We also have a strategic planning session this week, just to kind of lay out our plan as to how we're going to move forward. So we're really excited to have him on board. This is just the framework from My Brothers Keepers, the Equity Framework, which talks about the elements of success. Collaboration is definitely the number one thing that will help us be successful in our My Brothers Keeper program. And Mr. Rollinson has a lot of experience in working with Durham community, working with the population. He's already given a lot of resources in our Project Build Intervention Team Meeting. So we're going to build on those skills and those resources that he has. Our CSS partnerships. So we do have a partnership with the City of Durham, which was one of your consent agenda items with the ILA. I've spoken with Ryan, who's our contact person at the city. We've kind of discussed how we can actually partner, not just with the ILA as, you know, they're they're funding part of our employees, but also from other programs that he runs in his department as well. The Hartz Program, we definitely have a partnership there, but we're going to be working on how can we build upon that already existing partnership when we're working with victims, their families of shooting, and just how we can provide those resources and additional services they may need. Durham Public Schools, we recently got that MOU approved with the, with DPS, and that one, that MOU is very helpful because Project Build goes into the school system to work with our participants. They talk to the counselors, they talk to the SROs, they get to meet with the student in their own environment to kind of help them maneuver and navigate through being in school and being a part, you know, if they're gang involved and things of that nature. So this was one of the biggest MOUs that we were very excited to have approved earlier this month. And then today, we have Uzuri Holder, who is with Duke University, who will talk about our partnership with their new hospital-based violence intervention program.
Before we, before we switch over for a minute.
Yes.
Would you repeat your name and your title?
Yes.
I think I kind of messed that up with.
It's okay.
Saying DSS, so just for the record, would you and the audience, would you repeat that?
Yes, my name is Crystal Harris, and I'm the Director of Community Intervention and Support Services.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Uzuri Holder. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I'm the program manager.
You need to speak into that, in that mic, so that everybody can hear you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, sorry about that. So my name is Uzuri Holder. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I am the program manager for our hospital-based violence intervention program at Duke University Hospital. It's called Duke Violence Recovery Program. Thank you. So a hospital-based violence intervention program, I think I spoke to you all before on a Zoom meeting. So but just to go over it briefly, a hospital-based violence intervention program are located in trauma centers all across the country where there's an increase in gang, gang violence. So you have them in DC, Richmond, New York, all over the country. And the idea is that we want to engage our patients when they first come into the hospital after a traumatic event to decrease the chance of retaliation and recidivism. Our overall goal is to connect them to community resources to best enhance the positive trajectory that we're trying to support them in doing, based on the goals that they set, not based on goals that we set for them. So our, I, we will do intensive case management for nine to 12 months post-discharge after, after their hospital treatment and connect them with community resources that are already established. Nothing that we create is based on the partnerships that we form. And what other AGVips have found is that they're most successful when they're connected with a community-based violence interruption program like BCU. So, next, sorry, thank you. So our program, the staffing model is a program manager and two senior violence recovery specialists. As we begin to grow, we will change the staffing model, hopefully having some more peer specialists and so on and so forth. But the idea is that we want to hire people with lived experience and that are of the community so that they have a better connection with the patients that we are serving. So, in many ways, our program is similar to BCU as far as when we're talking about case management services. But both programs, although slightly different, we have the same goal in in order to really encourage the growth and recovery of the patient or the person that we're serving. BCU works on census tracts, whereas we are working on Durham County as a whole. And for our partnership and where our partnership comes in, we meet the patient in the hospital, whether it's now in the emergency department, because previously when I spoke to you, we weren't working in the emergency department. We were only working on the inpatient unit. And we would meet patients bedside and meet with them daily to build a rapport and then start developing goals what they would work on post-discharge. Our pro- our program is voluntary. Now we'll meet them in the ED as well. And so if we know that the patient per se is in the census tract of BCU and we're, there is fear of retaliation, we will refer to BCU. If it's a patient that is already on their caseload, we will make sure to refer to BCU, and they'll be able to come in. Bull City United will be able to bring in four outreach workers and one supervisor to meet with the patients at the hospital. And so our, I, our, our hope is that with this partnership that we can support in BCU's efforts of really trying to mitigate retaliation, mitigate the violence that's happening in 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 the community, and then also know that they have the connection at Duke. And so we can make sure it's like a wraparound service and care for our patients. I don't know if I'm missing anything. I think that's it, right? And so, yeah, so prior to the MOU being signed, we were meeting biweekly, and so we're going to continue that either biweekly or monthly, just to make sure that no one, no patient falls through the cracks that is is part of the referral process.
And just to add, we've been working on this MOU for about a year?
A year now. So we finally got it finalized. So we're really excited about getting to work and partner with Duke University. And that concludes our presentation.
Well, thank you both for your great presentation. And I see General Manager Pierce.
Good morning. Joanne Pierce, General Manager for Community Wellbeing. I just wanted to really say from that previous slide that I just want to acknowledge a few folks because it has truly been a year and a half of standing meetings every other week where we were, that slide, you see that figure of that intersection of those subsets, that it took that time to talk about how Duke's Hospital Violence Interruption Program and our Community-Based Violence Interruption Program would work hand in hand, collaborate, so that no one really is lost in the cracks. And so I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Sean Gibson, Ms. Uzuri Holder, Ms. Gray, and Mr. Johnson, because just that consistent work and to develop, develop the memorandum of of understanding that we have, working with our legal department, it was just a lot of work in the making. And just thanking Ms. Harris, Crystal Harris, for just towards that end coming on, just capturing all of that and and making sure we move things along. And I just wanted to take that moment to just thank this group for for this work that we know is very important. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I can just add, if we can just have them to stand, because the work that they are doing, it is trailblazing work, is non-traditional work. And so I think they have just done an outstanding job in standing up this department and making sure it has been successful. So if Ms. Keisha and David and Arkeem and, I don't know if Corey is here with it. Thank you all so much for your great work. Yeah, this is, this is amazing. I, you know, I've heard little bits and pieces about it for a long time, especially the piece with Duke. And we just need to acknowledge Duke's cooperation and partnership as well. So just thank you all so much for the work that you do, because this is transforming. It really is. Commissioners? Commissioner Jacobs, questions?
Yes, thank you. I'm so thrilled to have this update. And Crystal, thank you for the work you've been doing to pull this, pull this all together. And and there's a lot of momentum here. I have questions about each portion, because there's so much happening. Related to the program with the hospital, what happens to the people that are outside of the census tracts? Because of course, with Keisha and David, I mean, we, you all have covered those census tracts, but people who come into Duke, what, you know, they're not officially in the BCU program. So how do they, what happens in those cases?
So then we we would take on case management of those patients that are outside the census tract and try to provide the intensive case management for them and follow nine to 12 months and refer them to other community-based programs that we are making connections with to try to support them in their recovery.
Okay. Can you tell us about some of the data that you're going to track around this? Like, will you be, just be curious, obviously, where, if the people, what census tracts they might be in? Will will that be something you track or?
So there's a, there's a larger, sorry to interrupt, there's a larger group that's a cachet group of Duke that is taking note of not only the number of gunshot wound victims that we are treating, but where they live, where they're coming from, what resources they lack in the community, EMS calls, wait times. So they're taking note of all of that. So we are tracking, not only just for my program, the people that we are working with, but Duke as a whole is doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the data collection around this is going to be really important to not just, you know, the outcomes, how, what what they are, but also what, just like you said, what are the gaps? What are the costs? You know, what are the costs to to the Duke ER, you know, when we have these type of incidents? And the importance that Duke is investing in this program, and then even honestly in in investing in social determinants so that they're a partner in helping us with, you know, the underlying issues of poverty in our community that are the source of the violence. I was wondering too, if you all are going to be, will you be serving like the whole family, not just the person? Because, look, you know, it's from the racial equity training, right? It's not just, you've got to treat the water, right? So just the whole environment, will you be be able to do that as well?
Yes, ma'am. So our plan is to, if the patient resides with this family member who is going to support them in their recovery, then we will provide wraparound service for them as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I I do have questions about the the other departments as well. I'm so excited about Corey. I know him from when he was Director of Youth Build, and most recently, he's been working as with, you know, housing, you know, Franklin Village and over across the street from Golden Bell. And he is, really knows the community, and he's a real collaborator, as you mentioned. Will you be looking at the model around, I know we've heard it a lot, about some type of community advisory group and working with all the different, you know, organizations in the community that work on mentoring and young black?
Yes, that will be our focus. We actually talked last week, we started to build our list of who we think should be invited to the table. So we definitely will have that collaborative table working together and helping to identify what the needs are within our community and identifying, starting with two focus areas, and starting to work that plan, set that plan up as to our action items.
Fantastic. I know he is going to hit the ground running.
He's very excited.
Absolutely. That's great. And related to to Bull City United, do we, you mentioned that we have two more offices. Do we still have the McDougal Terrace?
Yes, this is in addition to the McDougal, McDougal Terrace and the Phoenix Square.
Okay. And please do let us know about the Week of Peace, so we can come out.
Yes.
And you mentioned that you're trying to get to 13 people, participants per caseload. What what are we at right now? What's, you know?
Off the top of my head, I do not know, but I think we're averaging about 10. We're close to about 10 participants for, per outreach worker. So Cure Violence Model, their cap is 15.
Okay. And I love that you're going to work, you're working on a website and a dashboard. Will things like the quarterly reports be on there?
Yes.
And it's amazing to see in those quarterly reports that the connections to resources, how much you all are doing, just referring people to resources. You and your, all of your team, Keisha and David, thank you. And Project Build, our awesome Project Build, which, who who really are the, they are the heart of our gang prevention strategy. So because of how important they, with the work they're doing, when I, when you think about ages 14 to 21, about ages 14 to 21, is that too, starting too late? I mean, that, that's really high school. And, you know, should we be looking at middle school? I'm just, is there a discussion about us really expanding the program?
So Arkeem and I have had that discussion. His team is really wanting to start earlier because we're seeing that that's where it is starting, in elementary school. So that is something that we will be discussing within this year and potentially if that is something we're looking forward to, you'll have budget requests for additional, additional outreach workers.
Right.
And also, I think you all, Arkeem, also house, you have a space in the Boys and Girls Clubs area, right? So they do get to interact with younger kids as well.
Okay. But I know that special meeting we had with Billy Lassiter.
Mm-hmm.
And you all, Arkeem, you, you all were talking about how your referrals from the Durham Public Schools are coming in about kids in middle school and even elementary school. So, you know, you don't have a very big staff. And I just, you know, we, we want to do the upstream investments in trying to address issues in the schools that, that are identified with kids and their families. So I'm just really worried that 14 is, is too late, really is too late. So, thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes. There was so much information in this presentation and it was really great to receive it today. And so thank you for that, Crystal, and for your leadership with the CISS department. It really feels like it's a department now. You've really done a great job of consolidating the services, providing a unifying sort of theme and feel to it all. And you mentioned so many times your strategic planning and I, I just, I, I think that's great and I really appreciate that. And I also just want to, in general, thank the folks that are in the CISS department of the county now because you're the ones that are helping make our community safer. That's what this is about, we're taking care of our community. Communities are safe when we take care of our community. I just really appreciate your critically important work. I agree with what Wendy said about Project Build and reaching down into the middle schools. Having been on the school board for 12 years, we heard that all the time from principals. You can start to tell, you know, by third and fourth grade. So I would feel supportive of certainly hearing a request for additional outreach workers in order to do that. And the MOUs that you've been able to put together with Duke and with Durham Public Schools, I, I know I don't have a true appreciation for what it takes and the amount of time and just all the details that have to come together to get MOUs in place, but yay, way to go. It's great. And it is thrilling to see this partnership with, with Duke and the hospital-based Violence Interruption Program, working in partnership with our own Bull City United and our own community-based Violence Interruption Program. It seems like almost another portal of entry, maybe from the hospital into BCU, maybe, maybe both ways. I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm just really glad that that's happening. And thank you for coming today and, and helping us understand the workings of it all. It's a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one other question, and you may have answered it in your presentation, staffing. There seem to be a lot of spaces that you haven't been able to staff up yet. How many positions that you still have available?
So we have four. So I have the data analyst position, which I'm hoping to post within the next couple of weeks. I was trying to kind of do a phase in because I had three direct reports that I just brought on in February. And then we have three Bull City United. We have an two outreach, one outreach, two outreach workers and a violence interrupter that we have to fill.
I know it's not easy to find people in these positions. So thank you. Thank you both for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
And Chair, if I can just add one?
Any other questions?
Yep. I just wanted to add one thing, and I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm interrupting a lot today, but I just want to say their vacancy rate is lower than the vacancy rate across the county. I just want to note that and thank Crystal and her team for the work that they're doing to keep the staff, those vacancies filled.
Great, thank you. Another question?
Yeah, I, you know what? I was also thinking when I was listening to the presentation, Crystal is wondering, is there any collaboration with Jess Bouquet, our, our ACIS trauma-informed expert in Durham County Government? Because I think it's, it, they, she may really be a resource to, you know, all, all of the Community Intervention and Support Services Program. Because you mentioned that on your slide, that you're using a trauma-informed approach with the program at Duke Hospital. And it just, wondering, I mean, I mean, we're supposed to be doing trauma-informed everything. That's one of our kind of system approaches, but, you know, I mean, that's, that's what also this is all about, right? Is, is, you know, first childhood experiences, trauma that, I mean, the, the trauma that people experience just with any type of violence. But just wondering if she could be a resource?
I have not met her yet, but I will definitely reach out to her.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I was impressed. I was recently visited a 22-acre campus for people experiencing homelessness in San Antonio called Haven for Hope. And the whole thing, everything, the big thing there is, it's trauma-informed. Everything they do, the way people are trained, all the programs. So it can be done on a very big scale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. All right. Anything else for you?
That's it.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
You want to introduce Cory? You just walked in.
Cory, you want to introduce yourself?
This is Cory Rollinson, who is the new My Brothers Keeper Program Manager.
Nice to meet you. And anyone else that works with this program? I think you stood, did you stand once before? Stand up one more time for us? So that people know who you are. Thank you. Thank you, Cory. Thank you. All right. Good stuff happening. The next item is 230074 Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization Annual Report. And I think Ellen will introduce her team here.
Good morning. Ellen Beckman, Durham County Transportation Manager. Just giving a brief introduction to Doug Plachinsky, who's the new Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization Executive Director. Just use the name DCHC, it's a lot easier than that mouthful. So excited that the MPO has provided this annual report. Doug is going to go through the presentation and I'll just be here to help answer questions as needed.
Now I'm on. I haven't used the wireless ones yet, so thank you very much. My pleasure to be here on a Monday morning to talk about the work we do at the Metropolitan Planning Organization with all of you. I'm going to go through a couple of things that we're working on now and then talk a little bit about what we'll be doing in the next year. And it's pretty high-level stuff, so. First of all, one of the big changes that happened at the MPO, as Ellen suggested, was I came on board at the beginning of this current fiscal year. So I started in July and probably the most important thing that, or the thing I'm most excited about me is that I'm a native of Durham. I was born at Durham County General Hospital and went to elementary schools and a sixth grade center, if anybody knows what I'm talking about, and middle school and high school all in Durham. So I'm pretty excited about that. My mom still lives here in Durham. I have about 20, 23 years of local planning and zoning and metropolitan planning organization experience. Just to provide you an overview about the area we serve, Durham and Durham County are our largest members, but we also provide regional planning in Orange County, including all of Hillsborough, Chapel Hill and Carboro, and then northeast Chatham County. So we are the federally designated Regional Transportation Planning Agency. Our board is comprised of elected officials and our technical supporting committee that provides recommendations to our policy board is comprised of staff from our member agencies as well as other partner agencies like NCDOT, institutions like our universities and the Triangle J Council of Governments. Now, one thing I don't remember from high school because they didn't tell us is what is an MPO? That was not in my ninth grade civics class. An MPO is this regional council that's designated in every metropolitan area that has more than 50,000 people across the country. There's hundreds of them. It involves a lot of stakeholders. It involves a lot of opportunities for the public to provide input. It's never the same in any given area. So not always the easiest thing to explain, but basically it's a, a regional council comprised of elected officials. Some of the things that we've worked on over the past couple of years, we've conducted a high-level comprehensive transportation plan. Comprehensive transportation plans are required by North Carolina law. They take a long-term look at all of the kinds of transportation projects that can include mobility for people and goods across a region. And they are, they go through a process that the state has defined. And to me, one of the most important things about the CTP is in order for a project to be in the comprehensive transportation plan, we do not have to have funding available for it. So it can be all sorts of concepts. You know, it's where you hear the pie in the sky kind of of project dreams. And, and I think that that's really important to provide that vision. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan is a federally required planning process. Basically, we take the elements of the comprehensive transportation plan and we identify what financial resources we will have in our area over essentially a 20, 25-year horizon. And we program the projects or we plan for the projects that are available for the funding we know we'll have. And the federal government set up the Metropolitan Planning Organization process to do that work. The next step out of that is for short-term, short-term projects that are getting ready to happen, whether they're buying buses or building a greenway or repaving roads or adding turn lanes. We come up with a short-term transportation improvement program. I'm sure it's very similar to the capital improvement program I believe the county has. And those projects, we make sure are prepared to go into procurement and construction or acquisition. Some of the current work that the MPO is engaged in are two US 70 corridor studies. The first one is the western portion through Orange County. It's all of Orange County. It's really looking at multimodal solutions and trying to, most of that roadway is two lanes through Orange County. So trying to understand how to improve traffic flow and reduce congestion along that two-lane highway. We also have a US corridor, 70 corridor study east in Durham County from the east end connector to the county line with Wake County. This study came about because NCDOT had planned to build basically an interstate highway from 540 through to the east end connector in Durham. And the MPO and the city of Durham believed that, that would cause a lot of disruption. And so we're taking a deeper dive and getting a lot of public input. You've probably seen comments and, and heard about the project in the paper to guide some different visions for a project that may not be as disruptive and could provide more non-motorized and public transportation options. Some of the other things that we do, we work on a, a regional travel demand model with our, our sister agency to the east, the Capital Area MPO. We review congestion management process, which is another federally designated process, but we focus on our, our region's most congested corridors and try to figure out if we can have projects to relieve that congestion. We also dive into big data. So we're learning how the data that is accumulated for all sorts of things like targeted marketing and outreach can be applied to understand how people move. We, we've worked with Ellen and her team on transit planning here at the county and again in Orange County with their group and their towns. And we often provide pass-through funding for public transportation programs like Go Durham, Chapel Hill Transit. And in Orange County, there's quite a bit. Chapel Hill Transit has the Easy Rider Program. Trying to remember that, that program name. So that's their program for helping seniors and those with disabilities in Chapel Hill. We work with them to deliver that funding. The biggest work we have in front of us coming up for the next year is that in 2022, at the beginning of the year, the MPO adopted a governance study. And the most significant finding of the governance study was that because of the way MPOs traditionally established themselves in North Carolina, being housed at the largest city within an area, that, that design did a great job of getting the MPOs up and running. But now that MPOs were established and we've got a couple decades of activity, it was time for the MPO to be really more autonomous from those, those principal cities in each region. You know, for example, Greensboro houses their MPO, Charlotte houses their MPO, Raleigh did house their MPO until a few weeks ago. That's since moved to a different host agency. So here in Durham Chapel Hill Carboro, we believed it was best to take a regional approach and, and our, our great partnership with the city of Durham and reestablish ourselves as a partner agency with the Triangle J Council of Governments. We believe that being in a regional agency as a host is more aligned with our member-driven service agency mission. We're here to work on the needs as identified by our members and stakeholders. And that area goes outside the city of Durham. So there was a perception that the city of Durham had an outside influence on what the MPO worked on. There's also all sorts of other efficiencies in, in terms of cost, data sharing, coordinating with meetings. It's just going to be a great fit. We are working out the details of that and we expect that study, or excuse me, that transition to be complete at the beginning of fiscal year 2024 in July. Some other things that we're working on next year, we received notification last week that we obtained a Safe Streets for All grant. So we'll be taking a look. Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. We'll be taking a look at how to improve safety for our roadway users all throughout our region, both urban, or not just both urban, suburban and rural areas. Now, we're going to take a look at non-motorized planning and, and how to produce some better technical tools to evaluate non-motorized pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And we'll potentially be working with Ellen and her staff on a bus corridor evaluation through the Durham County Transit Plan Program. Those are all very exciting things that we have ahead of us. I'd like to invite all of you, if you are available. If not, please don't worry, we're going to video the MPO's annual orientation program. That will be on February 15th at 10:00 AM to 10:30 AM. We'll send out a link, we'll, and we'll be posting it to YouTube after it's done. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. I know that's a lot of really big information and I'm just glad to be here this morning.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Anything for you, Ellen?
No. You know, we're excited that Doug's here. It's a big change. Those of you who've been around the MPO know we had the same executive director for, I don't know, 15, 20 years? Long time.
I worked for the previous executive director in 1995 as an intern for the city.
Yeah, so the MPO is making some big changes this year. Transitioned to TJ Cog, a new director, and got a lot of exciting projects happening.
Questions? Commissioner Jacobs?
Yeah, I just had a few comments. It's a huge change bringing Doug on. Some of the changes have been alluded to, but... It's a huge change bringing Doug on, and some of the changes have been alluded to, but this is the first time that the director of the MPO reports directly to the board of the MPO. So we have really been implementing a lot of changes. Very excited about the MPO moving to TJ Cog. It's going to really help build the foundation towards a regional transportation system and also open up more possibilities for partnering with Campo as well. So it is, it is very exciting. Also, I wanted to highlight how transformative our 2050 MTP is, and that is very foundational to a lot of the decisions that are being made. That MTP has really prioritized things like multimodal transportation, non-car-centered transportation, not just for climate change, but for health and quality of life. And frankly, from what we heard in updating our transit plan and from our comprehensive land use plan, people saying, this is the type of place that they want to live in. And so the 70s study is really in response to that, because the MTP says, we don't want 70 just to be another freeway. We want it to be something that serves, you know, the community in many different ways. Also, could you just speak a little bit, Doug, about how we're trying to use new measures as we evaluate success and, you know, some of the new types of, in terms of not just vehicle miles traveled, but some of the other data that we're trying to develop and also that we're going to be developing, a rubric around equity measures as well, racial equity. And I'd love to hear a little bit more about the Safe Streets for All grant.
So, transportation planning very often has had some standardized performance measures, you know? What condition is the pavement in? What condition are the bridges in? What does vehicle capacity look like? And we haven't necessarily understood best how to translate that information to measures that are relatable for most of us, you know? Because we don't say, well, this road's bumpy, you know, or it's got potholes. You know, it's very, it's presented in a very technical way. So, we're going to be looking at how to explain things in terms of energy consumption and effects and impacts on communities that have traditionally been under-invested in for transportation, because we find those communities in all sorts of settings. We find them in rural areas, we find them in suburban areas, we find them in our cities. So those are just some examples of what we're going to be working on in terms of focusing on alternative measures, and then really a good equity component. The MPO is funded, and we're working on filling a role that will focus on outreach across our region, and understand the different kinds of outreach and the different needs of our members, whether we're in places that are more or less developed than others. As Commissioner Jacobs alluded to, people are, people are coming. We are going to continue to experience growth like virtually no other developing place in the country. It's very exciting, and it's also very challenging. So we need to be prepared, and we need to understand how to best listen now. That's really exciting. And the last thing, you mentioned the Safe Streets for All grant. We applied for a half million dollars, so that's $400,000 of federal money, combined with $50,000 of local money, and the state of North Carolina agreed to pitch in another $50,000 of state money. And the state of North Carolina agreed to do that, because this grant program was not eligible for states to apply. It's specific to local partners and regions to apply for this money, to come up with identifying local safety plans, what are local safety priorities. So in order to come up with the scope of what we've, the work we want to accomplish, we need to go out and listen. So we need to listen to what folks are concerned about. We need to get an idea of where our traffic crash problems are. Many communities, this one included, adopted a Vision Zero goal five years ago or so. That was a big national trend. And by and large, with the exception of a few communities, Vision Zero communities have not had a decrease in fatal and severe traffic crashes. Vision Zero being the idea that we can reduce traffic fatalities and serious injuries to zero. Actually, in Durham City/County, they've increased. And I believe they've increased everywhere in North Carolina that I'm aware of. So we really want to go back and rethink this approach and figure out what we could do better. I think the data will help us uncover some aspects about crashes that we weren't aware of, and it's a very exciting project. Everybody's going to be on board. We'll have a great multidisciplinary group of stakeholders from all across our membership and institutions and the public as part of the project. And really, the, when you think about the cost of the plan, you know, in general, we understand most of how to improve roadway safety. But implementing a lot of those improvements takes public buy-in. Implementing things like roundabouts take public buy-in. I've worked in plenty of communities that would not appreciate a roundabout at all, even if it did save or reduce traffic crashes. So, understanding what the public will support and is comfortable with, and also providing good information will be the key first step in developing a work plan for the grant. We're really excited about that, and something I've worked on a lot. It was a focus of my graduate education when I studied it in Detroit, and it's a program I worked with in Massachusetts for the Berkshire MPO that I was on staff there for. So it's something that I really appreciate personally, and I'm excited that the MPO is going to be involved in it.
Thank you.
Just quickly, wanted to thank you for this presentation, and just to say, I feel like the decisions that the MPO makes are some of the most important decisions for public health outcomes, environmental outcomes, equity outcomes, just related to land use planning. It's just such a critically vital, important area. And it sounds like the changes that are happening with governance are going to be good ones, and looking forward to seeing how that unfolds. Is there a written annual report to go along with this presentation, if one was interested?
No, there is not this year. It's something that we will produce for next year. It is not something that the MPO typically had presented as a standalone document or presentation, which is a shame, because it misses a great opportunity for us to talk about all the important work we perform. So definitely, next year, we will have more of a complete annual report that'll talk about our program accomplishments and our spending performance on the funds we receive. I'm very excited about that, because I want to, because I want to get out and spread the word. So don't think this is a one-time visit from the MPO with something that, you know, not only do we maintain our touch point with staff and your representatives on our board, but, you know, we appreciate the importance of coming to our member jurisdictions and being in their place of business and working with them.
I'm so glad you came today. I served as an alternate only on the MPO in my first couple of years on the county commission, and learned a lot, but there's so much to learn, and it's connected to so many of the important areas I mentioned earlier. So I really appreciate the fact that you came today and provided this report for us. I'm really pleased about the 70 corridor study and the orientation it feels like you all are taking with that, looking at other mechanisms to reduce congestion besides just road expansion. You've probably already seen it, but if not, I'll just want to lift up quickly, the Durham BPAC has, is submitting, or has submitted, I'm not sure which, a letter about the corridor study and their recommendations, and I thought it was excellent. So I just want to mention that. And thrilled about the Safe Streets for All grant. And I've noticed it's in the news more frequently, it feels like, and then the data clearly, you know, demonstrates that where our streets aren't actually safer for pedestrians and cyclists, as far as crashes with cars go. So, that's a, it's wonderful that we have that as a priority going forward, along with non-motorized projects, and then the bus corridor evaluation for Durham County. So anyway, thank you so much for this presentation, for your work, and look forward to following all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Just a few things to add to what Doug said, to put some context onto this. So there's a lot of federal funding, right, that goes through the MPO, that funds the MPO's operations and these studies, like the US-70 study or the Safe Streets for All study. It usually requires a local match, a non-federal match, 20%, and that's shared among the MPO jurisdictions. So Durham County, as part of our annual budget, pays a share of those costs. And that's an ongoing thing. One other thing I want to note is that the MPO has opportunities for local, its member jurisdictions to request funding for special studies. And we are considering a study in coordination with the city on bicycle, pedestrian, and greenway planning for next year. The MPO is going to be considering that through its budget process this spring. But I wanted to give you a heads up that that is proposed, and it would be something that Durham County and Durham City coordinate on, that's a county-wide plan. So, we, we haven't done that in many years. A lot of the issues in the county haven't been looked at since 2006, 2011, so it's kind of overdue.
Did I hear something this weekend from Buttigieg about safe streets and funding? There was quite a bit about safe streets on the news.
They did announce the Safe Streets for All grant awards last Wednesday.
Okay.
It hit the news.
Okay. So are we going to be able to apply for those funds?
We received a grant.
You've already received it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Half a million dollar total project.
Super.
Yeah.
Money, money, money. Like. Anything else? All right.
I apologize, I was a, I have new hardware in my arm, and my phone couldn't read the sensor, so that's why it was beeping. I apologize.
That's all right. That's all right. So thank you. Thanks for your presentation. All right.
You're very welcome.
Okay. So, Commissioners, lunch is here. We can take a lunch now? Or is there, is there an urgency that we, anything that's urgent, that we put off lunch? What's your preference? Okay. All right. So we're going to take about a half an hour break for lunch, and then we'll be back at, what is it, 11:30? Be back at 12:00. Okay.[1394.58] Okay.
Okay, Commissioners, we will convene. So, the next item is 230076. An update on the Durham County Memorial Stadium operation. And we have Zachary Pitchard, Stadium Manager, to introduce any additional resources, resource persons to begin this conversation. Ann Mo.
Good afternoon.
Hope you're feeling, hope you're feeling better?
Much, 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 much better.
Mo, can you pull it closer?
Good. But I attributed that to taking five vaccinations before I actually caught COVID.
Five?
From the beginning of the system, yes, I've had, I've had five shots with regards to COVID. So, I only had congestion and a cough, and that's subsided in two weeks.
Great. You know, they were given five. I thought it was just three.
The first shot, and it's booster, and then three boosters after that. It's five.
I don't lost track. I thought it was.
Five shots, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, we're, we're here today, and hopefully Pam is, Pam is online with us, our Chair for the Stadium Authority. And we're here to give you your annual update on the operations of Durham County Stadium. And both Pam and Zach will take over the process from here.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time. And getting back here, I know it's been probably a couple of years. You know, we had, had our shutdown due to the pandemic, as we talked about earlier. And, you know, we're, we're now really back full swing. We'll get into, you know, some of the stuff that we've been doing out at the stadium the last, you know, year and a half or so. Some general updates, which many of you guys are aware of. Some areas that we have for some growth and opportunities, and then some challenges that we've kind of ran into throughout the year. And, and, you know, how that looks towards, as we start looking towards next year. So, this past year, we, in fiscal year '21 and '22, we hosted events on 106 days. Can I use that as a strong metric to know what our usage pattern is? This is actually back to the numbers pre-pandemic. Would like to note that we were also unavailable for the first couple of months of 20, of calendar year '22, because we had our astroturf replaced in that time window, and we were not available for booking of the field or the track due to that construction project. Yep, so, so, and we'll get into the updates here in just a couple of minutes. But our astroturf has moved to a much more current system, which includes a natural infill as well as a shock pad. And we'll, like I said, we'll touch on that here in just a moment. You know, we've done a lot of unique events this past year. We've seen, working with the Sports Commission on the NAI National Championship Games for football. Shaw University made their return this past fall for their football and soccer programs. We continue our relationships working with the Carolina Flyers of the AUDL, which is the American Ultimate Disc League. And then Tobacco Road FC, who is our USL II soccer program. But then also, we've worked with other community partners, you know, listed out here a few of our other regional events that affect us with the Body Armor State Games, as well as the Russell Blount East Coast Invitational Track Meet. The Striders brought their, their event back this year. This was their, their return from their pause of their program. And other, you know, events throughout our community as well. So, talking about our facility updates, you know, first, I'd like to thank you all for approving the full-time employee position of Stadium Event Coordinator. Evan, our coordinator, started in November, so he's still getting up to speed and getting, getting ready to go. But his role really is to provide support on a day-to-day basis. So, he's going to be doing more of the interfacing with the event organizers, getting a better plan out, ready to go for the folks who are affected within General Services, our temp agencies that we work with, as well as providing more of that onsite direct coverage throughout, throughout the day, event days. Help supplement some of that workload that goes to me, allowing me to do a little more of the, you know, big picture, working on some more of the strategic planning and things like that that we need to as we continue to grow. Having, you know, looking at this calendar, this upcoming rest of our calendar through fiscal year, you know, we're looking at probably another 60 event days. So, we're, we're really on pace for a very busy spring and summer season. So, it's, it's, it's back. You know, that's, that's the thing that, that we're excited to see. We're seeing, seeing good participation from anything and everything, from our, our youth groups all the way through the colleges. We are seeing, we did replace our astroturf, like we mentioned earlier, last, about this time last year. We went to the astroturf 3D3 blend, which is a mix of fibers. Either there's a single filament, and then there's a multi-slip filament, which is a, three filaments all into one. That is the base for our Brockville infill. So, this infill is a pine infill instead of the crumb rubber. So, you've, you've seen, like, when you're watching a football game, see somebody make a catch on the sideline, and you see these black pellets fly off the edge of the field. That is the, what's called the infill, and it kind of serves as that base like dirt wood if you're putting your, your plank and your cleat in. Well, we've looked into the, the research, and we found that Brockville, this pine-based substance, performs much more in line with what the natural surfaces play in. From a, the most notable thing is that we've seen the temperatures on the field decrease from the middle of the summer, about 160 degrees, down to about 120. So, in the middle of the summer, we're seeing close to a 40-degree difference, which is helping, obviously helping the athletes perform better, but also just in general their safety. Also, part of the reason to move towards this pine infill is that, you know, that crumb rubber does leave the field pretty heavily. It gets into the waterways, it gets into the streets, it gets in everywhere. With it being a pine-based substance, it's much better for the environment. This pine is recycled material from the plants down in Georgia, where they've crowded up the trees for lumber usage, and they've kind of treated it with a, just a tumbling process. It's almost like polishing a stone in order to get these down to the right size and granules. Lastly, is the shock pad that's now underneath the field. It's, it's a growing trend in the industry to see a shock pad. It helps with the actual impact from when an athlete does end up hitting the ground, having, you know, trying to limit or reduce the impact the head injury may have with the impact with the turf. So, that shock pad itself really is a, a good, good cushion to have underneath it. And, you know, we're, we're ahead of the trend where it will be required in the not-so-distant future. We've also now are in the process of getting our scoreboard and sound system updated at the stadium. I know in the past, we've had numerous conversations through email regarding, you know, the sound system's not loud enough. The letters on the scoreboard, you can't see because they're red, and it's directly in the sun. We won't have that problem anymore. So, we have moved to a Daktronics video board system. That's very similar to what you see if you went to Duke, went to PNC. It's a, it's a very similar from both a equipment, but also from a quality standpoint and a production standpoint. So, long-term, we'll be able to do live game video, working with, with contractors to, to run video up on the board. We can do, you know, if we have presentations and stuff like that that we want to do, we can do things like that out there now. That's a little bit different than we've done in the past. Connected to this, on top of the scoreboard, we have replaced our sound system. The sound system is rated to cover the entire facility itself. It's something that we, I've seen in action at a couple of other local venues, and it does provide a, a good quality sound. Doesn't necessarily have, it's, it's still a PA system. It's still an announced system. Doesn't have some of those additional low ends that you would see at, at some of the other venues, because they put additional subwoofers in there, but it does provide a very good quality sound. And lastly, the most recent Stadium Authority meeting, we discussed updating our, our booking priority system. In the past, Northern High School had a lot of, had first, first call for anything from a football standpoint. From, as we've moved forward, with Northern High School getting ready to move their operations back offsite, we've really looked at finding different ways to, one, maximize our opportunities to solicit local, regional, and national level events by working either internally with the Stadium Authority or with our partners at the Sports Commission. But also then looking at helping our other groups that have been around, working, growing alongside with us. So, you know, we've got a So, you know, we've got a, a four-tiered system that we're, we've rolled out that basically allows us the opportunity to, to get priority dates on the calendar, long-range for our local and regional events. But then also, you know, provide some additional opportunities for usage locally and protect some dates available for them as well. Some areas that we've had, had growth in since the last time we met. We have rolled out our alcohol sales pilot program. It was very successful during games such as the Tobacco Road FC and the Carolina Flyers. You know, these adult-based groups, we saw a, basically a twofold raise at our, our revenues. And for those type of groups, we didn't see any real negative effects. Those groups are more of an adult-based, similar like what you would see at a Durham Bulls game. Now, we, you know, have continued to expand and research that program to the point now that for those events, we are moving away from the beer garden and actually selling out of concession stand and allowing people to take those back to their seats. We've been working closely with, with our sheriff's deputy contacts there to make sure that he's comfortable with things. Been well-received across the board. It's been an opportunity that people. We've, like I mentioned earlier, we've had, had events come back. You know, Shaw was gone for, for a number of years. They made a, their return this year. We brought in new events like the NAIA National Championship Games. We're working closely with the Sports Commission on two or three other bids that we're hoping that will be able to be announced sometime shortly. You know, in addition to some of our other local organizers are back. You know, the Striders were gone for a couple of years with, with COVID. They're now back. We've had some changes inside the soccer dynamics, but now we've seen NCFC return some, some of their soccer practices, items like that. Our, our Sports Commission relationship, we've been working closely with Marcus and his team. They have done a great job. I think Marcus and bringing in the One Durham concept from the Sports Commission's been great to not only help our communications just as we go to bids, but also working alongside our other similar venues throughout the, throughout the community. Working, you know, being able to have a better, more accessible conversation with Duke or Central that we hadn't had in, in a number of years. And then lastly, the, the new scoreboard presents really a great opportunity as a new amenity for us. We can do it as a few different things. First is, is looking for partnerships. You know, becoming something where we can use that to generate additional revenue from sponsorships and other, working with other groups on, on things like that. Also, we are proposing that the scoreboard be used kind of in a three-tiered system. One would be just the basic scoreboard. That would be something that would be included in, in the rent. The next step is basically if they have content, if they have logos, if they have things like that, they want to show up on the screen, that would have an additional fee. And then any video production beyond that would have additional fees beyond that to help cover costs connected to it, the additional utility draws and all the time connected to, to running that equipment. And that's something that's an industry standard that you see from across the board. So some challenges that we have, you know, ahead of us, you know, first is the amenities. We've done a great job with y'all's support on really bringing this facility forward. We are running into some, some space issues. You know, looking at our locker rooms and some of the media workspaces and things like that that are coming up for our larger event bids. We're getting, having to get very creative in order to make sure that we're able to fit everything in that these groups are bringing in. A lot of like the USATF Youth National Event, they were going to use the Armory. It had to actually bring a construction trailer in to help offset some of the lack of office spaces or flex spaces we had for registration. So there's different things that will affect our long-term event bids that we need to start looking at now so that we can stay up with the chance to continue to earn some of these larger events for our community. Our operating costs have continued to increase, just like everywhere else. We're seeing about a 10 to, 10 to 25% on average. Specifically, our cleaning fees have almost gone up 50%. So we've seen a, you know, wide array, in part due to staffing concerns, but in part just due to obvious supply chain dynamics. As such, we are going to be presenting a pricing increase to our stadium operating budget. We have a Stadium Authority meeting tomorrow and we're looking at, at somewhere in the range of a 7 to 15% price increase. We haven't done pricing changes since 2019. So, you know, we're, we're starting, we are already starting to see our costs start exceeding our, our rental fees, but now we're, we're certainly on the low end of, of that and starting to lag behind. And then lastly, we've, we've touched on the Northern High School leaving, but there's still some dynamics that are changing, support and activity participation. For sports like soccer have rebounded, but football's still lagging a little bit behind. We're still seeing other developing sports start taking over, but they don't necessarily have the overall funding base to, you know, take over some of the, the costs that we have as a, as an overhead for renting the facility out. We've seen a number of different regional and private sports parks popping up. Like Harry, for example, has theirs that they're proposed, that they're working through. Rocky Mount's another one that has those larger multi-use park facilities that is locally going to start affecting things once, once they come up back online a little bit more. And then lastly, Northern High School, you know, we've worked with a number of different groups like Mount Zion and a few other private schools throughout last year to try to start filling some of those holes that will start coming into our schedule as Northern moves, moves away. We've also worked with David Hackney to identify some different strategies on how to continue their usage of the stadium, be it through a rivalry week-type game or other, you know, bringing other events in that, that work alongside what they have. So while I think losing Northern may have a little bit of a ramification in the short term, I think long-term, we're actually in a position where we'll see some enhanced events come in on the backside of it. And with that, I just kind of wanted to give you all the, the broad base so that you could have an idea of what's going on and feel free to fire away.
Well, thank you so much for just getting us up to speed as to what's happening. The conversation, just a quick conversation that I had with the mayor and I think we were trying to get you on that call too, about recreation for the summer for, for our young people in Durham. And I know most of everything that you do at the, at the stadium, it has to be paid for. Or are there any things that can be done where the students, the young people can use a space that don't have to be paid for, that we own?
So presently, the stadium has been used by departments, for example, for events that, that the organization wishes to have. The Stadium Authority can waive fees based on proposals, but what's requested is that those individuals who, who would like to have an activity at the stadium at no cost, present a proposal to, to the authority so that they can judge on the value of that proposal and then rule accordingly with regards to it. So we have had events there that have been non-fee events. And then what's happened is the costs have been borne by the, the stadium budget.
Thank you. I didn't know that. We will probably have another conversation soon. I'll make sure that we invite you to that conversation as well.
And for example, we like partnered with the, with Public Health and they ran a vaccination and back-to-school drive. So they, I believe we reduced their rent down to like covering the cleaning fee. So we've done things like that as well to help kind of offset some of those, those costs, those hard costs that we incur. You know, ask them to help support some of it, but then at the same time still, you know, be able to provide services beyond that.
Yeah, thank you, because we have to do everything we can to keep our young people out of the street and have them so they have someplace else to go. So thanks. Hey Pam, how are you? Great to see you.
If you don't mind, could I address that?
Sure.
First of all, thank you very much to the board for your support of the stadium. We're, we, it has come a long way and that's because, you know, you have voted and supported us continuing to do improvements. If you haven't been there lately, it really is, it's a beauty. We appreciate you allowing us to have the event coordinator that's going to give Zach a lot more time to, for strategic planning and for be able to think about how we can use the stadium. COVID, of course, hit everybody really hard and it's going to be a while before we can really, before we see sports really take off as they were prior to COVID. But Zach's working really hard for some of that. But to address that specific thing about the community, as long as I've been involved with the stadium, which has been quite a while, there's always this fine line between having the community want to use it at no cost and us having to charge, of course, so that, you know, we can pay for the improvements and the operating costs. We had, in the past, there's been problems because the Stadium Authority was seen as favoring some groups over others. And we have to be very careful that we are serving the entire community and not just, you know, charging one group money and then not charging another. So that's a tension that we constantly work with. As Zach said, we do, we have lots of things that we're doing that we're not charging the community for, but we try to make sure that they are community-wide events. During COVID, of course, there was the whole, it was a joint thing between the city and the county of showing the movies, that free movies for people to come, like a drive-in so that they would not be in a movie theater, but yet could kind of do a community Christmas event. And the authority is always willing to look and look at proposals, but that is a tension that we constantly have to think about to make sure that we are not, not saying that some people can use the facility for free and that others can't.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners? Jacobs?
Thanks so much. It's great to have this presentation. We haven't talked, we really haven't had this in a long time. And the stadium is really one of our jewels in Durham County. I was there for the NIA, at least for the first part, and then made it back to see the rest of the Celebration Bowl. But it was so great. That last picture, I remember that. I was standing on the, on the side with the school that won, from Iowa? Were they from, what state were they from?
The team that won was from, Kaiser was from Florida and Iowa, yeah.
Iowa, right. Yeah, they, if you can go back, well, then we'll lose you Pam. But if you notice in that picture that we just saw at the end, it was packed. I mean, the, the families that came from Iowa, I mean, they really showed up. And there were a ton of people there. And I even met alumni who had played on teams, you know, I mean, one guy was in his 70s. They, he had said, "Well, I was going to go to the Celebration Bowl, but when I saw that our team was playing in Durham County, I booked my ticket to Durham." So it was huge. We had people come from all over to, to that game. And, and they loved the stadium. They thought it was fantastic. And the scoreboard looked great, the field. I forget his name from, his name is slipping my mind. One of the local radio station guys was there DJing also. It's, it sounded so good. So, yeah, it, it was great. And, and you know, that's, that's the Willie Bradshaw Field and the Willie Bradshaw scoreboard and then the Tommy Hunt press box. I was up in the press box. ESPN was there. It was like, oh my gosh, seeing, you know, the press box filled with national folks there. So we really, we really have a jewel in the stadium. So thank you for, you Pam and all of the folks on the authority for doing a great job. And Zach and Mo and everyone for, for leading that. And I'm really glad to hear that you all are looking at ways to leverage the revenue and advertising and all those things. And, you know, the fact that you've been at a price increase in four years. But, you know, I think, so I guess one of the things I wanted to hear more about is, what, what are your thoughts about after Northern High School is not going to be one of the anchors? So glad the way you're partnering with the Sports Commission. But, you know, talking about revenues and the need for a real public-private partnership, partnership, big sports facility in Durham, we need another revenue source. And I just want to put in a plug for us going back and looking at that quarter cent sales tax, the prepared meal tax that we tried more than, I think it was in 2010. That was 13 years ago when we tried for that. And that's what other counties have. That's what Guilver County has. That's what Wake County has. And that funding is for entertainment and sports, to promote and support and facilities and whatnot. And that would, that would really help the stadium too, if we had that. So. But what are your, what are your thoughts about the future and about Northern?
Yeah, so regarding Northern, we've, we've been, like I said, we've been working with Durham Public Schools on identifying a few dates throughout the, the year that they can help offset some of those. We're talking about 10, really about 10 football dates each year. We have been working with Mount Zion Private School for the last couple of years on trying to grow and expand their football program. They are basically waiting to make sure that we've got the clearance from DPS to move ahead with Northern, but I've got their dates basically ready to start rolling out. Additionally, I'm in early talks with a couple of other groups who are starting to fill some Sunday dates for us. They're looking at about eight dates if we are able to, to come to final terms on it. And I should hopefully be able to, to have some more information on that, hopefully by the end of this month, if not next month. As we keep looking to, to just get creative, you know, that's, that's the big thing is that we, we had a lot of interest in a lot of those same dates throughout the years. Now it's just making sure that people are aware that those dates are now going to be available. But, you know, we have to kind of get to that point. So like I said, this year we might have a little bit of bumpiness on that fall slate, but I don't think it's going to be, you know, too much of a, a change of pace for us.
At the same time, the, the tax funding that you're talking about would help with the CIP portion of the stadium and the maintenance of the stadium and the growth of the stadium, as well as, I think the Stadium Authority has also been talking about a sports complex. And the development of that sports complex to actually expand the use and the availability, like you were saying, Commissioner, with regards to the community having a true sports complex. So they, they have talked about this with both the, the, the authority as well as with the Sports Commission. And that desire to include the stadium as well as property that the stadium does own into a sports complex in that location, I think is something critical for our future growth and for the community with regards to activities associated with entertainment and sports. If you, if you propose, we, we would be grateful. Yes.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for your vision towards continuous improvement, but also thinking about health implications and such, as with the AstroTurf. I was happy to hear about the things you told, that you taught us about that today. That sounded great. Congratulations on your alcohol pilot being successful and thinking about ways to expand that. Congratulations on your alcohol pilot being successful and thinking about ways to expand that. Really seems like an opportunity to seize. And, um, I would be interested in understanding a little bit better about the revenue versus expense side of things and what role the county currently plays as far as making up, you know, gaps in funding. I'd like, I just would like to understand that better and then think about ways to offset some of what the county may be doing with, you know, some additional sources of revenue, either private or maybe, I don't know about this tax thing, but I hadn't heard about that before. Interested in learning more about that as well, but.
Yeah, so from a individual event perspective, that's, that's kind of the way I, I design our pricing structure. Um, you know, we, we have currently two categories. We have basically the Durham local nonprofit youth groups, adult-based activities, like the base Durham groups, um, that are, fall inside of either a nonprofit or a base activity. Then we have the category two, which is a college, pro, for-profits, um, that type of cluster. And basically that category two is the group that we look to provide a little more of a revenue structure on versus the category one. Based on numbers that I polled, um, ahead of our meeting for tomorrow, on average, we were probably subsidizing somewhere between fifty to $200, depending on, how much of the stadium they were using on a typical four-hour rental. And that would be before concessions get accounted into it, um, on something that's longer, say like a track meet day. You know, it could, the expenses could wind up being additional, almost $500 to $1,000 over, you know, over that, before you add concessions in. Then you add concessions in, like on a track meet, the Russell Blunt meet, we did about $370 of concessions per day. So you're getting that overhead back down to, you know, we're, in order to pay the janitor and, and the utilities, you're looking at about $200. That doesn't get calculated into the revenue stream. Um, on the, the revenue side events, we're, you know, on average, offsetting that typically $50 to $200 ahead on a four-hour event.
Interesting. Does the, sorry for my ignorance on this, does the county provide funding for operations or just capital improvements?
Yes, the general fund actually supports the stadium. Uh, they are in the general fund account and so, the stadium since, I think since Zach has been here, has been able to almost be even with regards to their expenses and the revenue stream that they have been able, except for, of course, the two years where they were closed.
Right, sure.
And.
And prior to that, it, it was not even closed.
No, correct, correct. So over the, over the last, you've been with us?
I've been here since, we're a little over four years now.
Yeah, four years, we've been close to revenue neutral.
Last, last year, our base operating expenses prior to, um, adding personnel back in there, we were approximately $179,000, which includes building maintenance, supplies, contractor services, all that type of stuff. And then the revenue line wound up being about $181, um, for the year, so. My, my goal and my vision is to try to make sure that we are, you know, doing our due diligence to the county to make sure that we're running as close to a balanced operating budget for events as possible.
Thank you. That sounds really very good.
And I think if it weren't for COVID, that we would be in a much better position.
Right.
I, I really do feel like business is kind of scaling a year or so before I thought we would be really getting to the point where we should, could scale it.
Cool, good.
The, the indicators are there at least.
Well, thank you for your work and thank you Pam and the, the rest of your colleagues on the board of, of the, of the authority. Really appreciate your volunteering there and your leadership there.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, thank you. Thank you for maintaining that stadium. I know that's a job all in itself. Thanks all of you that are on that board and staff for keeping it looking good and going forward. And, um, what your plans are for the future, I don't, I didn't think I heard that, but I'm sure you have some. Yeah.
We'll have more to share with you after the Stadium Authority meeting tomorrow, um, because they'll be looking at what the plan is for, uh, next fiscal year, as well as, um, looking at what improvements we can make. And then secondly, Chairman, I would very much, I very much appreciate all of the traveling you have done behalf of the stadium as well as the Sports Commission to try and get some other venues here that are, are foreign venues, so, um, we'll be working to support you with regards to those activities and hopefully bring in some international.
I'm excited about that. Just don't ask me to go nowhere. It's going to be below five degrees anymore. That was a cold place to be, so, but I'm excited that it's going to be here. Thank you. All right, let's see, our next item here is, um, National Opioid Settlement Funding Framework. Survey update and next steps, I can put you in. What's happening with, um, survey?
Good afternoon Commissioners. I trust you well and I will not take all the 30 minutes. I, I would be surprised.
All right.
If we need that much time. So as you, just as a reminder, we, um, we put out a survey to the community to ask for input on the opioid settlement funds. The, uh, survey opened December 7th and we extended it. It was initially closing, uh, January 16th. We extended it through January 31st. At the end of that day, we had 394 responses and then somebody dropped off a box of about hundredsome paper copies, paper responses, and they have been keyed, but those have not been incorporated in, in this analysis yet. So we will, we will go back and we will look at everything and then provide you with more detail. This is just to give you kind of a snapshot of what we, what we know so far and then get some input from you on our next steps and, um, what else you would like to know and what else you need to, to help you make the decisions on how to spend the money. The first question was which strategies our, our audience thought was, was important? And no surprise, everything is important, right? So just a reminder, these are the 12 strategies that are eligible for funding in the option A of the memorandum of understanding. The, uh, recovery housing support was selected the most times and collaborative strategic planning had the least amount of votes, but you can see it was pretty well spread out. The second question was, um, we asked, um, our audience to, to rank the 12 strategies, to, to rank their, the top three and, um, so the highest priority was given in the order that you see here on the left, evidence-based addiction treatment, early intervention, strategic planning, recovery housing and recovery support services. But the, we also looked at the overall, uh, who got the most votes and basically it's the same three? No, employment services is in here as well, um, but, um, so these are the top five overall vote getters. The next, then we had several open-ended questions and those are tough to analyze, but, so out of the 218 responses, we had, um, there were about three general themes that emerged. Uh, and the question was, um, what programs or services they thought were, were missing from the 12 strategies? And so here, here the, um, information was family support, early intervention in youth, evaluation, monitoring, evidence-based programming, I'm, I'm guessing. Those are, those were not, um, people felt were not mentioned in the, the 12 strategies, but especially the, the evaluation and monitoring is certainly something that you will, I'm sure you will build in as you decide, um, what is funded, uh, in the end. The question four was, was also an open-ended question and that was what areas and neighborhoods had been hit hardest by the opioid epidemic? We had 229 responses to the question. We had a number of miscellaneous and I-don't-know questions and then, um, we kind of grouped it in, into these, into these categories, low income, uh, high unemployment, communities color and, and, and a number of people said it's all over, it's everywhere. Sorry, and I just lost my space here. Okay. The next one was also open-ended and it said what resources were needed, the, the, our, our respondents thought were needed in those communities and we had 236 responses and, um, yeah, they were not specifically addressing the, the question often, but it was housing jobs, treatment services and services that are based in the communities where the problems exist. And then the last open-ended question was, um, if there were any community issues that were overlapping with our opioid problems and, and, and you have, we had 244 responses and you see it was the, the most were crime, unemployment, homelessness and then mental health. All right. I'm sure you're interested in who responded to our questions, uh, to our, to our surveys. And so we had, I told you, we had 394 and people were told they didn't have to, um, answer these, but, uh, we had 374 responses that indicated, um, the brace and very surprising about the distribution here. But, and then our, in, in the question about gender, we had 373 responses and so it looks like well over half were white, white women answered the que, they answered the survey.
Quickly on that, I guess there wasn't like a, the white, we didn't break down Hispanic versus non-Hispanic?
No, we didn't. We also asked about age and we actually asked about the, the year a person was born. So we were able to aggregate that a little bit, but give you more detail. And I, I must say I was surprised by, by this, um, distribution of, of the responses, but as you can see, the largest group were persons in between age 31 and 35. And then we had a pretty, um, even distribution between mid twenties till 60, mid sixties actually. So, so we got a pretty good, um, cross-sector here. We also asked about zip code, um, where persons resided. We had 47, um, responses from persons that did not have a zip code that had anything to do with Durham County. And if you, if you would like to, to know, we were happy to, to provide those. But, um, yeah, so you can see 27701 and 27704 were the, the, the largest and then we have, um, 03, 05 and 07. 27712 was not very well represented, Commissioner Jacobs. Anyway, so, um, and then the last question was the reason for interest in this survey? And we had almost, well, over half of our respondents said, um, they were concerned community members. We had, um, a little over 100 said they were service providers and then personal experience and directly impacted family. And I would, I, I'm, I'm going to guess that since the paper copies are from, from persons, um, in the field, that we probably will have a lot more directly impacted and personal, and personal experience, um, responses in, in the, in the hundred-some responses that, that have been keyed since, since we looked at these. So that's really, real quick, that was it. And, and we had discussed, or we had mentioned the, the possibility of having additional community input in the form of a virtual, uh, community session or an in-person. And so I wanted to kind of ask for some, some, some guidance, for one, based on what you just saw. What information are you looking for if, from, from these next, from, from additional community input? Is it that you, you want, are you looking for something specific? Do you want to further define or refine the survey results? For example, go back to see, these are the highest five and, and we can see what, what our, our participants would do with those, or do you just want general input? Do you want some input on how to implement the next steps? I think there, you have, we have a number of people that have some ideas about how you should decide how to distribute the money. Virtual via Zoom or, um, and/or an in-person? We were thinking maybe a daytime virtual session and/or a late afternoon, like 5:30 till 7:00 in-person meeting? Yeah, so I, I stopped talking, so.
So I would like to know, um, how did you arrive at where the surveys were sent? Because those, um, the first graph that shows that the majority of white citizens responded, there's no equity in that at all. I'm, I'm curious as to who selected? Who was in the group that selected where those surveys were to be sent? Because that doesn't represent our community.
So the survey was available on the county website?
There was, they weren't available on the website.
It was on the county website. Um, it was announced here. It was, um, there was a press release. We, we emailed it out to, to various, to, to, to our networks. So that was, that's how we, um, announced the survey.
And I will add, um, we did a preliminary check to see where the responses were coming from. And, um, once we noted that we didn't have a good diversity of responses, interim general manager Palmer and her group actually identified that we needed to have manual surveys.
Yes.
And actually had, you know, manual surveys put out across the community as well to see if we could get people that may not have had access to the computer to complete the survey. So the, the, um, I think you said it was, there are 100 manual surveys?
We actually have more than that. We probably have, we already keyed some, but we have more than 100 left that came in after, um, after the 31st. But yes, and, and so some of our treatment providers said, asked us to, to make those available in paper copy and also to amend the language to make it simpler and to reduce the length of the survey. When, you know, to just reduce the ques, the amount of words in the questions. So, and, and again, those were sent out and, um, and we, we put it out in, in the treatment community to, um, to respond to the survey.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see us at least do one more attempt, uh, to the organizations around. There are a lot of organizations that are, are, um, that are not, uh, that represent our total community. I'd like to see where those are contacted and if we have to go to them, we go to them and have them fill them out. Because it's, that, that just, that doesn't represent our community. It just, just doesn't.
It is actually, it is a concern. It is a concern.
Yeah.
So we can, we can take another.
You know, it's, people, people are busy. People are. You know, it's, people, people are busy, people are busy, and they are struggling to make a living every day. And they don't always have the time to fill out forms, unless they see that it's something in it for them. And just to send out surveys, and they don't even know if it's nothing, so what? They may not fill them out. So I think it behooves us to have, to figure out some way to have people understand this is about you.
But just to clarify, we have not included the 100 people that got the, that filled out the paper survey at the organizations, that has not been included in here, is that correct? So I think one step is, we need to get the updated information, because what you're talking about, Chair Howerton, they actually went and did that, but it's not included here.
There are some, as I mentioned. Some community organizations did. We had Sheriff's Office and Star Program in the Detention Center had some completed. But we went specifically to impacted, directly impacted persons, people that have lived experience, that those are the ones that we felt were easier to reach through our treatment providers.
So I think it would be good if we could get all of that information included and see how that changes, you know, the demographics, and also information, we definitely need that.
Certainly.
Yeah.
That's only 100.
Well, there's, yeah.
We have 394.
394, okay.
So far, so we will, we will have a little over 500 total. And, and, so.
Yeah, would be, I'd be interested to know what the total number looks like.
Okay, yes, certainly.
Other questions?
I just, I've been on a lot of the emails where it was sent out, and it's, the survey was attached, and like, please print this out, and go out to the folks in your groups, and please have people fill it out, and then, you know, we'll come pick it up, we'll, you know, you can drop it off. So I do want to commend Gudrun and everyone who was working on it, because they really did make an effort to make it as easy as possible for people. And also using iPads, right? Wasn't there something, okay, I'm getting mixed up then.
Probably Public Health, it's way, way ahead of everybody else.
Yeah. But I, you asked what other information could we need? If you could go back to that slide where you, there was like the top, because it was really interesting, there were like the top four, or whatever, oh, you just went past it, go back. That one?
Mm-hmm.
There's actually a lot of overlap there, and, you know, if we're going to go back out, and maybe, I do think it would be good to do something during the day virtually, and then something in-person for people. And to, I'd like to hone in on the things that have risen to the top. I mean, first of all, housing, we see there, recovery housing, I mean, we know that's such an important need, and the recovery support services, I mean, there's, you know, if we could focus on the things that are being reflected here, and then try to get more information from people, like, what are some of the challenges that they're having around the housing? Or, you know, any specificity around the report, I'm sorry, recovery support services, or, you know, evidence-based addiction treatment, just maybe like getting a little deeper into these things, I think would be helpful. And also, if you're going to do, and we do, we do need to do in-person or town hall, whatever, we said that we wanted to do that. I just hope that you'll start off with an education piece, like explaining stuff about the opioid funding and how it works, but also what you presented to us, which are, here are the things that we are already doing in Durham County. Because we are doing a lot, and that's really thanks to Durham Joins Together, and all the work that's been happening for like six years, and all the grants we've gotten, and all the programs that people have started. So just making sure that we're educating people about those resources. Lacey, who is with Public Health, I'm going to send it out to the whole board, but she just updated the list of recovery housing.
Yes.
Support resources that she, because she's part of the Community Linkages to Care Grant.
Yes.
And so there's just a lot of resources that people don't know about. So I think the town halls are also a way to share information about resources that we have now.
And we have, we have a couple subject matter experts in Durham County, not Durham County Government, but in Durham County, that have reached out and volunteered to be part of the events and share their information.
Okay, that would be fantastic.
I had one more slide, I think.
Anything else?
I just wanted to thank Gudrun for leading the effort to get input from the community. It's hard to do, and especially on a low budget, you know, when we think about our outreach efforts, where we feel like we have gotten diversity of responses that's more representative of the community, we've invested more in that, like the Engaged Durham Process, and everything that's gone into getting input from people who use transit, you know, for the transit plan. It takes resources, and, you know, I think we've done a pretty decent job so far with the resources that you've had to work with, and hopefully those 100 that you have will help skew things the right direction. So we'll see. I agree with everything that Brenda and Wendy have already said, I don't have that much more to add. I was going to suggest perhaps reaching out to those who are in the MAT program within our detention center, but it sounds like you may have already done that.
Mm-hmm.
So it sounds like that was a great idea, to interface with people who have lived But, you know, yeah, I mean, basically, I feel like the information tells us, all of the 12 areas are ones that we really need to focus on, you know, and yeah, narrows it down some to these top five, and I'd be happy to go with those top five. And I think it would be helpful to get more recommendation from staff, and from, from subject matter experts, and those who know more specifically what our gaps are, so we'll know what, how to direct resources towards those.
So.
Those are my thoughts.
Yep. So the next steps, we already made checkmarks on some of the things that had been done, right? And so we're currently in the community input phase, and then you will, we'll come back to you, or, but you will need to decide on option A or option B, which is required, and then you can authorize spending. And just to remind you, this is how much you have. The dark green is based on the website you have already received. I don't know where Claudia is hiding it, but this is the money that you already have And then you see the amounts that are forthcoming in the next couple of years, and then it will, the last few years will be 511,000 annually. So as you, as you decide on where to put the money, you know, your resources are limited with these funds.
So are we working with a consultant?
Yes, I'll let Gudrun, Nidi with NCACC.
Yeah, so we, Nidi, she was here last September.
Right.
And we are continuing.
Still working with her?
We are continuing to reach out to her.
Because I know there's always a big conversation at the association, where we have our meetings, as to how the experts are doing, going about this. So I want to just make sure that we are in touch with them.
Absolutely.
That we get this right, because this is a lot of money, to not get it right. Yeah.
And so with that being stated, Madam Chair, I will go ahead and put a plug out there that one of the things I'll be asking staff to do is to look at how we can bring a person on full-time to help shepherd this initiative. You know, Gudrun has done a great job, but we all know that Gudrun is charged with many other important roles, and so I really think we need someone that can dedicate 100% of their time helping us get this right.
And, yeah, I may be so bold and just say, and that person can be bigger than just the opioid settlement funds, right? It can be your behavioral health subject matter expert, working directly with the manager in guiding your next few years.
Yeah, I think we need someone that can be objective and really bring this about, because we've got, it's just, it's just too important to not be objective about it.
And I think the other piece is you also need that person to do the monitoring evaluation, bringing back, so you know, if you decide to fund something for several years, that you also know that you're making, that funding makes an impact, so you can see whether you want to continue leaving the money there, or directing it someplace else.
Yeah. So if the Commissioners are okay with that, then, I see nods of heads. We don't have to vote, we just can agree. Thank you, Gudrun. All right. All right, let's see, the next item is update 230067, it's an update to the Environmental Affairs Board City-City-County Interlocal Agreement. And this update will be given by, oh, are you Tobin? Jay, Jay, Jay Perry.
Oh.
Yeah.
Get it all the time, trust me.
You don't, you don't even look like Jay, you know, so forgive me there.
He'll tell you he's not as handsome as I am.
You are absolutely more handsome. Okay, I'm going to get, all right, stop talking.
Good afternoon, Commissioners again. And in response to inquiry or request that you had, and in preparation for an upcoming agenda item, the Environmental Affairs Board is seeking your approval on modifications to the interlocal agreement that we have with the city of Durham. We had spoken to you previously, they're basically requesting the updates to sort of better diversify the pool of residents that will serve on that board, as well as increase participation by our youth. And so introducing Tobin, who doesn't need introduction, but Tobin Freed, our Sustainability Manager. We also have Julie Malavati, who's the Chair of the Environmental Affairs Board, and I see in the audience just stepped in, we have Summer Austin and Stacy Poston from the city of Durham to help us with this. So I'll turn it over to Tobin, and she can talk us through it.
Thank you, Jay, and good afternoon. I called you Jay.
They're often confused.
All the same. Just say boss, thank you, boss, and it can go anywhere. Thank you, good afternoon. I am Tobin Freed, the Sustainability Manager, and I actually am just going to turn the floor over to Julie. She's the Chair of the Environmental Affairs Board, as Perry mentioned, and she is going to explain really what the motivation is and the desire with these changes.
Hey, awesome. Hi, everybody. My name is Julie Malavati, and I am the current Chair of the EAB. Thank you so much for the opportunity to discuss the revisions to the interlocal agreement, and we really highly value your input on structuring the board to serve Durham most efficiently. So currently, the major change that's being proposed in our document is that we're planning to remove designations from the EAB seats. So currently, the way our board operates, we have someone sitting in an energy seat, in an engineering seat, and so what we're planning to do is actually do away with those designations, and we're advocating for at-large seats for those particular seats. Well, we will also have youth seats, but those are separate from these particular seats. So we see this as an opportunity to increase the number of considered applicants for an EAB position, promote diversity, and promote participation for citizens with different backgrounds in Durham. And a key consideration is that our EAB members are highly multidisciplinary. For example, one of our members leads a climate justice and equity fund, but also sits in the engineering seat and has that expertise. Also, one of our members works for geospatial analysis with the EPA, and also has expertise in air quality. So this interdisciplinary background makes their contribution stronger in meetings, and their assessments of issues broader in impact and scope. And furthermore, our EAB members have expertise beyond their degrees and vetting criteria pertinent to a specific designation. So with the removal of designations, EAB wants to ensure citizens of Durham with experience and interest in sustainability can apply to the board. We also expect that with this change, more applicants well-versed in a wide range of sustainability disciplines can apply, and a highly qualified applicant can then be selected amongst many applicants. And in terms of the way the board operates, from my experience, multiple environmental perspectives are considered to address a presented item. And I've served on the board since 2019, one seat designation doesn't give, for example, a greater authority on addressing what were presented over another. So ultimately, we also have the help of city, county, community organizations, our liaisons, and they've also been a great support to the EAB, and they've also helped provide specific expertise that the EAB does not have at a given time. And so therefore, we propose that EAB positions be made at large to increase diversity of perspectives on the board. One, select from a highly qualified applicant pool regardless of adherence to a designation. Two, and three, promote a culture of interdisciplinary accountability on our board. Thank you so much, and I'll take any questions along with Toby.
Thank you, Julie, for explaining that so well. I will just add that this has already been approved by the City Council, this version late last year, and as Julie mentioned, in addition to taking away the issue area seats and making those all at-large, there is the addition of three youth seats, which everyone is pretty excited about on the Environmental Affairs Board. We're ready for questions.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all for your presentation. Questions, board?
I would just say, as the liaison to the EAB, I strongly support this recommendation by the EAB. I would encourage us to make these adopted changes, and I'm sure they can answer any questions. I also think that the city's representatives that are here today, you know, if you have any questions about all the work that the city folk did in just vetting it for the City Council, and just logistically, the challenges that would be there if we weren't to approve these changes, you know, I think that for us not to approve the changes, there would need to be a serious, large concern. So I think the changes are good, they're going to improve equity of access to opportunities to serve on our boards and commissions, by basically removing a systemic barrier, like you almost have to have a degree, you know, that it's difficult to obtain for every individual in our community. And so this opens it up to every individual in our community. And this board is so thoughtful and so careful in their deliberations, and I know that regardless of whether or not there's the certified expertise in each seat, that the people we put on our boards and commissions are going to take the time to seek out expert knowledge if there's a, you know, a void somehow, somewhere. So I would encourage us to adopt these changes.
Thank you, Commissioner Carter, for serving on this committee, and for being our ex-official to bring this information to us, we appreciate that. Commissioner Jacobs, anything for you?
Well, thank you, I really appreciate, Julie, is that right? Am I saying, yeah, I appreciate your, all of your comments, you're clearly passionate about this, and have really thought about it very deeply. I, you know, I'm going to go ahead, obviously, and not, and support this, but I was the person who had some concerns. I think one is just about the process, I think that when we do have joint boards and commissions, it's very awkward when something has already been approved, and then it comes to us. I think that, I think in the future, when we have joint boards and commissions, it would be good if there are going to be changes that we both, both boards get to discuss the proposed changes at the same time, and provide feedback before either one actually goes and approves it. Because it just, it just creates a very awkward situation. Because it just, it just creates a very awkward situation. I do, I do, I'm glad that on page three in the document, it says that the chair will have some authority to kind of assess what the needs are and gaps. Because, you know, I I think it is important to look at what what is the expertise that's here and what's missing. That that was my concern, that we do make sure we have all the different areas covered. So I'm glad that you that that is in there. You know, I, you know, we we really rely on our boards and commissions. And I know for the EAB, one in particular, we have relied on you for our greenhouse gas plan, for our renewable renewable energy plan, different things like that. And so we do need the expertise that you all provide. We don't, we don't have that on our board. So so and and, you know, we, looking at our, our, all of our county boards and commission, it's very common to, not, I'm not saying all of the seats, but it is common that we have at least some designated seats for different areas of expertise for that very purpose. But I totally respect what you all are trying to do. And and so I don't have any issues at this time. Thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you so much for addressing that. I do think that having an opinion from the chair, if there is, for example, a lot of expertise, for example, in policy and we're lacking something in energy, we'd be happy, I'd be happy to advocate or mention something and keep an open line of communication as to what expertise is needed on the board. But from my experience, everyone on this board has expertise in so many different things. It's very rare that you find an applicant who just is well-versed in engineering or just in policy. And so I think that opening up these designations, instead of having them be so adherent and like critically this particular criteria, I think it fosters this sense of like interdisciplinary accountability. And I really like that sense on our board that we're kind of making decisions with many different aspects in mind, not just one particular seat designation. And I I do really like that exchange with our board and how it has relationships with the city and the county. And I think in the future, going forward with editing this agreement, I do agree that we should have a consensus between both boards and both commissions before we go go forth with approving anything. So I definitely agree with that sentiment.
All right, nothing else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tobin. Perry?
Thank you so much.
All right, let's, and let's see, what do we have next? We have now we have 230105 Durham County Sheriff's Office Grant Amendment with the Institute for Intergovernmental Research in the building bridges between the jail and the community-based treatment. Something else. So have a presentation by the sheriff? Community-based treatment for opioid use disorder demonstration project extended the grant period to January 28, 2023. And who's going, who's to lead?
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Are you leading this? Okay.
I'll just kick it off for you if that'll be helpful.
Okay, and you will introduce your team.
So my name is David LeBar. I'm the director of planning and development for the sheriff's office. Chief Hawkins, he's the chief of detention services. Captain McKinney with detention services and Major Barnes with detention services. So back February 8, 2020, the sheriff's office was awarded this grant opportunity with IIR. This was $93,000 to be utilized to cover a peer support specialist position as well as a licensed clinical addiction specialist. Along with those positions, we also had budgeted some travel, equipment and training and various supplies with there. From then, we weren't able to spend all those funds, so we asked for a budget extension through December of 2022. So what we're here today is to discuss another month extension to utilize these funds. And if you have any specific questions as to the training or the items to be purchased, our staff is here to answer those questions.
But should you, so so you're here to ask for an extension?
Yes, ma'am.
Questions on the board?
I would just say absolutely, and I'm sorry that you all had to come down here because this could have just been on consent, obviously. This is a no-brainer to me. Obviously, it's a fantastic program and we wanna keep supporting it.
And I believe you're asking for a motion today.
Commissioners, this Gudrun over here, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. So allow me to clarify, the the extension for the grant was was already awarded to the sheriff's office by by IIR. And and the item in front of you is for you to approve and then authorize the manager to to sign the extension, which is only through the end of February, unfortunately. And the reason you have it in front of you is because we are asking you to suspend the rules and vote on it today because we couldn't have waited until the regular session at the end of February.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
It's been moved improperly second to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to three zero passes. Now I need a motion to approve.
I move that we authorize the county manager to sign this, approve whatever is your request.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second to extend the grant period to January 28, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Sorry, you had to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gudrun.
All right, the next one is 23077 to provide a letter of support for general services application to environment protection agencies, solid waste infrastructure for recycling grant program to obtain federal funding for the renovation of the Redwood Convenience Site. I see that Mo is here. Can we kick it off?
Why not? Good afternoon, commissioners. What you have in front of you is a letter of support that would would be signed by the county manager or or by Commissioner Howerton with regards to supporting us in going after a federal grant. So I'll let Chrissy explain a little bit about what we've been doing behind the scenes with regards to the federal grant.
So you all saw the video the last time we were here about the Northern Convenience Site and getting that one up and running. And so next on our schedule is for the Redwood Convenience Site to be renovated. And so the EPA came out with these, this grant opportunity. It's the solid waste infrastructure with recycling. They call it a SWIFER grant. They have $40 million in funding to help support recycling and waste infrastructure. And so we decided that we should go for this grant. They they're anticipating giving about 25 awards up to and it's between $500,000 and $4 million per award. And we're working with TJ Cog to write up the grant. And so as part of that, we want to include what the county's contribution to that. And so that's what the letter is for, to say that we are in support of the the grant and the and the contribution. But it would go towards the construction of that renovation at the site.
Questions, commissioners? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say awesome. Thank you for doing this. And I would make a motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor?
Aye.
It has been the motion is approved. Now I need a motion to approve the the application for approximately 25 assist agreements with at least one award per each EPA region. How about that? This is for the application.
Yeah, I move that we provide a letter to the county manager or the board, the board chair, for this grant application.
Second.
It's moved improperly second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Thanks.
Thank you. That was a quick one. So 230107, approve approval to enter into a contract with the National Institute of Minority Economic Development Institute, the institute, to serve as the fiscal agent for the Haiti Reborn Justice Movement. The board is requested to suspend the rules and vote to approve the $2 million contract with the National Institute of Minority Economic Development to serve as the fiscal agent for the Haiti Reborn Justice Movement. This contract will extend through June 30, 24, before the vote considers, before we consider the vote, I would like the county attorney, county manager, to share more information about this.
Sure, and I'll turn it over to the county attorney, but just want to provide context for why this is coming back before the board. It was considered at our January, I think, 23rd meeting. And at that meeting, the board actually voted to, for this funding to be used as a match for the PERC grant. After that approval was granted, we were informed by city staff that the PERC match funding could not come from a governmental unit, that the funds have to be raised through private donations. So with that, in consultation with the county attorney, he has advised us that we should bring it back before the board to put it on record that it will no longer be used as a match. And so with that, I'll turn it over to attorney entries.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam County Manager. Just procedurally for clarification, since at an official board meeting, you made a vote regarding these funds to go one place. I'd just like to tie the loop and connect that action as essentially being rescinded and bring it into the vote that you're about to make so that there's no confusion about there being 2 million twice. It's the same 2 million. It's just going under a different ILA to a different sort of fiscal agent managing entity. So what I would request that you do, in addition to our spreading this on the record, is to essentially vote to rescind. And I'm gonna give you the sort of nomenclature details of that vote that you did on the 23rd. It was, it was the agenda item. And I'm gonna allow Madam Clerk to clean this up as necessary in the system. But at that time, it was identified as 23-0063. And that was essentially a budget amendment to allow entry into an agreement with the city of Durham for the partnership for equitable and resilient communities, what we call PERC initiative. And you, we are seeking a vote of rescission that you concur to rescind that action sort of in advance of the vote you're about to make. So if someone would be willing to sort of make that motion, I would appreciate it.
I would make a
Did you get all the language? I got part of it.
Well, I would vote to rescind the vote made on January 23rd, item 230063, to rescind that vote to enter into an ILA with the city of Durham for the purposes of a local match for the PERC grant program.
Okay, did we need to, did we suspend the rules, suspend the rules first?
I'm sorry, I thought I heard that. Yes, we do need to suspend the rules.
Okay. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now we can, now you can make your motion.
Okay, I'd like to make, as I said before, I'd like to make a motion to vote to receive, rescind a previous vote that our board made on January 23rd for item agenda number 23-0063, where we entered into, to enter into an ILA with the city of Durham for the purposes of providing a local match for the PERC program and to benefit the Haiti Reborn Movement. And that we, I vote that we need to vote to rescind that decision.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we need a motion.
Cory made that motion. Can I ask a question or two? Or would you like to get the motion on the table first?
Okay. And so
Now we make the motion to to enter into a contract with the Institute of Minority Economic Development to serve as a fiscal agent for Haiti Reborn Justice Movement.
So moved.
Well, I'd like to have discussion first. Okay, second, but then discussion.
Now discussion. You second it, now discussion.
Yeah, I just wanna know what's in the contract.
So what's in the contract is basically what was in the ILA with the city. It's the same thing. We are really just changing out the fiscal agent. So there would still be a requirement for there to be quarterly reports or the key performance indicators to be measured and tracked to report back to us. But instead of that being done through the city, it will now be done through the institute. And they would be the fiscal agent of the funds. And instead of Haiti Reborn Justice Movement submitting an invoice to the city to cover the expenses, those invoices would be submitted to the institute to cover those expenses. And then the institute would also be the agency that would be responsible for collecting those reports and reporting back to the county on the efforts of Haiti Reborn Justice Movement.
So the contract is, it almost seems like it's a cross between a contract and an ILA. It almost seems like we're contracting for the fiscal agent services from the institute. But the ILA, in some ways, is more with Haiti Reborn and what the reporting requirements are, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is that my understanding is correct?
So it's really about the terminology. We use ILA when we are entering into an agreement with another governmental agency. And since the institute is not a true governmental agency, it's really more of a contract. But it serves in the same manner that an ILA would. So they would be responsible for the same things we would hold the city responsible for, except they are, they are responsible contractually instead of through an ILA. And then they will have an agreement with Haiti Reborn Justice Movement on what the required invoicing parameters would be in concert with with the county.
Is there an additional administrative charge that goes toward, that we probably didn't see before because it was going directly to the city?
So there is an administrative charge. And this is the same process that we've used for our previous contracts. So the county provided seed funding to Haiti Reborn Justice Movement in a total of $89,000. That fiscal agent was the United Way. And so that's, that's, again, just like the city would have been the fiscal agent. United Way is not the fiscal agent for this amount. It's the institute. But the institute will act in the same manner that the United will act in the same manner that the United Way did. And the United Way charged a 3% administrative fee, and so there'll be about the same administrative fee with the institute. We haven't gotten to that point yet since the board hasn't approved that funding, but in consultation and conversation with Mr. Price, he was amenable to, to charging that same, you know, administrative fee that you, the United Way did. We provided all of the funding upfront to the United Way, and then Haiti Reborn invoiced them to cover the expenses. It will work the exact same way with the institute.
Just, point of clarification, I think before, and I'm new, so, but we use this language, ILA, which is actually something that's regulated by statute, intergovernmental sort of agreements. This is not that. This is a service contract, and I think the draft, and there's only a draft now that is able to be adjusted as you require, but it'll say service contract. It will reference the prior proposed ILA that was sort of entered into, but this will not be an ILA, it will be a traditional, a contract, traditional contract language, naming the various bodies, it will have provisions, does not have to have the administrative fee in there, but it certainly can if that's your desire, but it'll be a traditional contract.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah, I just want to note, because Attorney Andrews and I had, did have a conversation at lunch, this is just authorizing the manager and the county attorney to start to enter into the contract, but it's not the finalized contract yet, which we would still, will that come back to us, actually?
So it doesn't, by this action, it doesn't have to come to you in this setting, you're of course free to, you know, provide input. Your vote now just allows the process to start. For instance, a question came up about attachment.
Attachment A.
Attachment A, which is a traditional, I think it's a carryover from the provisions that would have been before in our traditional with the United Way agreement and the other agreements with the institute. It'll just be tailored, but it will contain the provisions about reporting in and reporting out, and all those kinds of details will be a part of the contract, which will be executed and be effective as of the date that we finalize it. So we don't, you know, by doing it today, and then if it takes 14 days to iron it out, you lose those on the back end. So, I'm just a fan of making the execution date be the go date, not being sometime before, if that's okay.
Yeah, I, I just, I do want to see, I think the attachment A is really important, that's the scope of services. And so I, you know, it's fine, I just want to make sure that that comes back to us, because that's the heart of it all. And I know it says here that this will go through June of 2024, which I'm really glad to see, because I have raised that before, as Mr. Price knows. I, I wanted to make sure that, because we don't know, you know, things can take a while to get going, so I was glad to see that. But I think that I'm really, and I've already spoke to the manager about this, I just think it's very important that we put the right structure into place so that this is successful. And I think that what, what the outcomes are, what the performance measures are, the deliverables, is going to be really key, and, you know, obviously, that's up to all of our staff experts to decide what are the best things to put in there. But also, I had asked about how can we make sure there is some integration with either the Community Support Services Director or with our Criminal Justice Resource Director so that they're also have some input, or, or that, you know, will the results come, the reporting come to one of those department heads, or will they come to you as the county manager? What are you thinking about?
So that's something that we, we need to work through. So remember, this group has not really had the money to invest into ironing all of this out. And so I, I didn't want to consume a lot of their time into developing a final contract until we knew that the funding was approved. So, I have spoken with General Manager Pierce, and she said that certainly CISS could be the department that, but there is already an employee in CISS that's an advisory member of the Haiti Reborn Justice Movement. So there already is this integration, we just need to crystallize it once the vote is done.
I have one question about the date, June 30th, '24, that only gives them one year, but does it?
No, that's.
I'm concerned about, I'm sorry?
2024 is further out, a year and a half.
I understand that.
Oh, okay.
That still is, that still is a year that really doesn't give you ample time to come back with results to show, it takes two to three years to find out is a program successful or not. So, I'm, what does, what does this mean, 24?
And, and it is certainly a date we can come back and revisit. As you know, we often come back to this board and ask to extend agreements and dates, but this is a date we felt like June 30, 20, yeah, June 30, 2023 certainly wouldn't be enough time to, and so 2024 gives us a year and a half to get up and going, and if we feel like the date needs to be extended, we would certainly come back to the board and request it.
I, I was just thinking about results. You can't really measure anything in that short period of time, but I hear you. Okay. Any other questions? All right, then, we've had a, a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. 23-01-02, commissioner comments. At this time, are there any comments from commissioners, anything that they'd like to share?
I had, um, one, maybe two things I wanted to mention. So, this is related to the small discussion we had earlier about, you know, the, the joint boards and commissions that we have, and when decisions need to be made, it's good if we think about those collectively with the city. It's come to my attention that, and I, and I, I shared this with Monica and our team, our clerk team, that the city seems to have different, sort of like benefits for their members of our joint boards than we have. For example, the BPAC provides some sort of, you know, tangible gift every year to their city-appointed commission members. And it was kind of embarrassing because, you know, we didn't have, we weren't giving T-shirts, and they were giving T-shirts. Also, the city provides, I think stipends now, I'm not sure if it's across the board, but they provide a stipend on, on some of the committees where we also have appointees and we're not providing stipends. And so, I think we should try to standardize that. We should at least look into trying to make sure that the benefits we provide are at least as good as what the city's providing. So, it, I, I thought I should mention this in advance of budget season, in, in the event that we do want to try to, you know, increase our budget for boards and commissions. So Monica's there too, she was going to maybe reach out to the city clerk and try to get some more information, but I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention.
We had this conversation ear, uh, earlier, I don't know if it was this year or last year, but we, we did have the conversation, and I think, Monica, did you look into that? Or?
So I think that was on just certain boards, a certain board. So we do actually offer stipends to probably about four or five boards. They're not for attending meetings, but we do give dollars toward mileage, we give dollars towards, like, the Women's Commission if they host events, but this was all prior to COVID. We still had the money in the fund, but it was not being utilized. So what I've asked my staff to do is to reach out to our neighboring jurisdictions to find out what they are offering, their boards and commissions. We have also reached out to the city. They have a long list of committees that they are giving stipends to for participating in certain meet, I'm sorry, they give money to for participating each meeting. They also do reward recognition, which is something that we do, we just halted that due to COVID, but they do give them, you know, gifts here and there. So we have reached out to those neighboring jurisdictions, we're waiting to get responses back. I did have a meeting with our budget person, Justin, and we actually, I've been in contact with David to see about what it is that we could do since this is the budget season as far as additional dollars, or, I do know that some boards would provide us with a outline of what they would want to use the money for so that we can bring that for, to you guys for approval. It isn't something that we just say, hey, we have the money here sitting, we have to get approval. So that's something that we're also working toward.
Yeah, because I think we talked about that we got 40 boards, how did we, how would we manage that? Or, I'm just vaguely remembering the conversation, with 40 boards and, what, eight to 14 people on, on, on each board?
I don't know, I'd just like to see what the city's doing and, and, you know, could take, and then take that under consideration. It may not be something we want to go forward with, but I would like to know what.
So in my research with the city, they actually keep track of their attendance, and as if the person is attending all of their meetings, they do get payouts twice a year, one in the summer and one in the, is it summer and fall? I think January and July or something like that. So they do get two different payouts. If they attended four meetings, at $50, then they get $200 in January, $200 in July. So that is what the city is offering. They do not give monies to county staff that are sitting on those boards, it just goes to city staff that is sitting on, city members that are sitting on those boards. City appointees, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to bring this forward so you'd know that this is something that's been raised at BPAC and may become an issue across all the boards. And I wanted to let you know that our staff has very willingly offered to look into, see what other counties do and see how, what we offer compares to what the city offers.
Okay, was there anything else, Heidi?
Wendy has a question about it, I think.
Hey, hang on a second.
I just had a.
Make sure.
Yeah.
Make sure she's finished. Are you finished? Were you finished?
With this, I am, yeah. With this topic.
Yeah, I just had a question about this. I mean, to me, this is like a really big policy thing. I see our chief of staff scribbling furiously on her notepad. I was like, yes, because it, this is like a lot for Monica to take on, on her own, so I'm really glad that I see you doing that, because I think there's a lot of policy issues around this. I mean, this is about staff who serves as leissons, it's about, you know, how do you decide what the reward is and for what reason? And, I mean, I'm kind of concerned that we, I mean, I really wish that the city had, clerk had reached out, I mean, I just wish that there had been some collaboration on this from the get-go.
Oh, so you're saying that the staff couldn't get the stipend, it would just be?
I don't know. I, I don't know what's going on, and it just sounds like we, we really need to be consistent, especially on the ones, the boards and commissions that are joint, city and county boards, we're going to have to be, come up with a policy together.
Yeah.
And, and, and it also, you know, it's not just about reward, it, it's also about the rules that we have about how people get appointed, how long they can serve, so I think this is like a really big thing for Shannon, if you wanted to take it on. And I'm just saying that because I know that our staff doesn't have the capacity to, this is like somebody you could bring in someone to do a, a study on. I mean, it's really big. So, I, I just, I, I, I'm really glad you raised this because, you know, this was definitely on the back burner during COVID, like, okay, we cannot deal with this kind of thing during COVID, but this is something we, we need to all really think out and develop some good policy.
It is very awkward when, you know, the.
Totally.
Appointees are receiving some sort of appreciation benefit that, you know, we're not doing the commensurate sort of offering, so, yeah.
I think Attorney Andrews has something you want to add?
I, I just wanted to, I think everybody's on the same sheet, but my former HR attorney self is skin scrawling. People who are staff or employees of a governmental entity, they cannot and will not receive any money or whatever, that's not about that group of people because we don't want to violate the Failure of Standards Act. People who are appointed are not required to receive anything, but they can if we want to sort of mash the city, and you can create a, a method of doing that, you can even put an escalator in there if you want to. So you don't have to come back every, so often when you get into a tit for tat with the city staying a dollar ahead of us. But, so you can do that. I would encourage you to monitor service periods, because some boards have people that recycle beyond a set of rules, and there's rules for all of these. And so if you're going to attach dollars to it, and this is more work, but you would also want to make sure that you don't have so-and-so person on their, you know, fourth term in a paid position. So if you do this, I would encourage you, because the county, the city may not be doing that, and that is how later somebody can put up a PowerPoint, as you mentioned, that says that this particular person who looks a particular way has earned $10,000 for service on the committee because we've not come back and appointed a replacement. So, you'd want to do that, but what you're doing is legal, it's a lawful use of dollars to do so. And we don't have to articulate what is purchased, but it'll be nominal, you know, but, but a good token. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's good enough.
Is that good enough for now? Somebody's got, somebody's got some work to do. Commissioner Jacobs?
Yeah, I just wanted to give an update on some of the things related to the, that I've been doing with NACO. One, and again, I'm sorry, I haven't shared it out, but Durham County has been featured on the NACO website for our involvement with the Peer Justice Learning Network that I've been doing with, with Gudrun. And I'm also going, I've been asked to be part of a webinar in April representing Durham County, a national webinar on, on that work. So I will, I will share that out with everyone. And also that, I have just convened a meeting last week, which Commissioner Carter attended as the Alliance Rep and as the H SAC Rep on Familiar Faces Initiative with Permanent Support of Housing. So, starting to form an action team with diverse stakeholders to look at what we can do here in Durham. And it was very well attended, and, you know, we had folks like, you know, Colin Davis, who is with the city doing their, their housing stuff, homelessness, and people like one of our major landlords, although she said she is a housing provider, but one of our biggest private landlords in Durham, to our Director of Housing for New Hope, to Deborah Jones Clark from Duke University. So, a lot of, we, a lot of key stakeholders who are very, want to be part of the solution, and I will keep everyone posted on that, but I'm really excited about bringing people together to address this really serious need in our community. And thank you, Commissioner Carter, for being a part of that.
Okay, so, I had an opportunity to go to tour Oak City Cares in Raleigh, and Oak City Cares is a facility for homeless, and it's really done well. I learned a lot about how they have put that structure together, and one of the things that I came away with was it is a public-private partnership there. But, learned a lot about what they're doing and some of the things that we could do in Durham as well. We will all be, a bunch of us will be going to NACO on the 10th for our Legislative Goals Conference, and we have, we will, I will be leading.
And we have, we will, I will be leading the Healthy Counties Forum. We have a forum there, breakfast and then a forum. But I know that at least five of us are going to that. And it's a free breakfast, y'all. And the other thing, just organizing some folks around the EPA appointment that I have been tasked with and coming up with some goals for Durham. And given that I'm, I am the only one from North Carolina, I need to be able to have something statewide as well as, you know, got to do some for home, got to do home first. But we also need to come up with something that we can look at statewide. And it's really an honor to be selected. I was, I was told that there were 80 people from North Carolina that they considered, and they chose your commissioner. They wanted Durham. And so it's an honor to participate and just know that this work will not get done just me. It's not something that I do, it's what we do. So I'm looking for folks that can have a conversation around the table and it's like water, round a water fountain and see what we can come up with. Because those are resources. The director is from North Carolina. He's looking to do stuff in North Carolina. So I'm excited about that. Anything else? Okay, we got, was there one other thing about directives? We have that. Are there anything that anyone wants to follow up regarding Commissioner directives? Okay, Dion is here to do that, okay? Say anything? Okay, Commissioner Jacobs?
I just want to thank you, Dion. I can tell that you have been working on this and have been going back and trying to tighten things up and do the follow-up and kind of close those items out. Thank you so much for doing that. I just wanted to, so what, do you have any thoughts about the things that are in yellow? What are the next steps with those? Just what your thoughts were about that? Wanted to hear what you were thinking about. How do we keep up with these things?
And I will tell you, the one, I know we were, we've been trying to, and in particular, Deborah Craig Ray has been trying to get in contact with former county attorney Willie Darby to try to get a date that he can be available for us to recognize him. And she's also working to get something with former Congressman David Price.
Yeah, Deborah's got that.
Yep, she's working on that. So that's still outstanding, it's something that we've discussed, but it's still outstanding and working on that.
And then a couple others are, they're in a pending status, but they've sort of been scheduled to be...
I can't hear you.
A couple others, even though they are still in yellow, they have an upcoming time at which they'll be resolved. And so they're being worked on, but they just haven't been resolved at this time. But there is a scheduled date, either at a future meeting or something similar.
Okay, anything else? If nothing else, for the good of the board, for good of the community, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Aye. Motion passed, we are adjourned.